Good evening and welcome to the August 25th meeting of the Board of Selectmen. And I invite you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and the flag is down there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item on the agenda tonight is public comment. Is there anyone who would like to speak under public comment on any item that is not on the agenda? Mr. Cunha?
May I approach?
You may. Thank you.
Stand up, we'll sit down.
You can sit, dine if you like.
My name is Daniel Cunha. I'm Precinct Two. I'm a native of Falmouth. And a veteran. I came back to live in Falmouth. I purchased a home in Falmouth. My question as a result of the trash, the dumpsters that are being emptied in this town of Falmouth. In 1983, we had dumpsters on Davis Straits on the west side emptied at 2:00, 4:00, and 5:00 AM on a Tuesday. Wednesday, they took a day off. Another dumpster came on Thursday and Friday at 3:30 and 4:30. I went to Town Hall to complain and the gentleman told me there he had nothing to do with commercial dumpsters. And I thought a lot about this. Captain Robishaw helped me one time on the anti-noise bylaw for parties. Then I was told, get a bylaw. I got signatures, I got a bylaw. The bylaw was presented to the town meeting in 1983. It was passed by unanimous vote, on a blanket vote. The hours were states. Everything's been fine for 11 years. All of a sudden, what you have in your hand now, on August 15th, that's last one, August 15th at 5:00 AM, I got a dumpster emptied in my backyard. So I made a look at it and as a result, it was cardboard. And it's a violation of that permit that you have before you. Who's going to enforce it? I don't know. I'm here tonight asking for help for the residents of Moran Avenue on the west side, which is but business. That's the only side that buts business. We would like to go on the agenda, ma'am, if possible. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Cunha. Is there anyone else who would care to speak on a public comment? Yes, Jane Perry?
You're good, Jane.
That's it. Yeah, that's good.
Sit down right there.
No, I don't want to sit right here.
Okay.
I think you'll be able to be heard from right there, Jane.
I believe so. Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the board, members of the public, Mr. Suso. My name is Jane Perry and I'm a town meeting member of Precinct Eight along with being a chairwoman of a committee. And my comments tonight are geared to committees. You are having a joint meeting tonight. You had a joint meeting with the planning board and it's time to get our committee handbook in the hands of chairpeople. And also, I believe, Selectmen Moffett mentioned in June or July about another meeting for chairpeople. It is time to do that. Also, it is time to have committees come back and give a report to the Selectmen. There are so many vacancies and not everybody reads the annual town report. So if they give a presentation, they might say, gee, that's a really good committee or I have some interest or I could give something to that committee. I think I'll go and attend. Last night I was flicking the channels and I saw Selectman Flynn giving a little brief interlude about what the Selectmen's do and what the county commissioners do. Last year you had behind the board. It is time to do something like that. It is time to be more, even though you come to a lot of things, that you have more input from the public. I don't know about anybody else, but I don't call you or email you unless it's really, really, really an issue. And lastly, I would like to turn my other hat to transportation. The Transportation Management Commission got derailed in 2009. We have been going back and forth between the administration of this town and the planning board as to what is going to happen to that committee. As people know, transportation is a very, very invital, important part of my life. And I served for actually 11 years on the Transportation Management Commission. And some of the things that we are doing, that we did now, are coming back full cycle. So it's time to either decide that we're going to disband this and bring it back to town meeting for a vote or at your joint meeting with the planning board, it is time to put it on the agenda to find out what we're going to do, if they're going to do a subcommittee and who's going to be on it. And I know that it's time for a transportation summit and I would be delighted to help you moderate it and get it together because transportation is a part of every, just about every element of the local comprehensive plan. I thank you for your time and I will send you a copy of my comments. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Jane. Is there anyone else? Yes, Mr. Dufrain?
My name is Adrian Dufrain. I'm here to represent Precinct Two with the concern that we brought before the Board of Selectmen some two weeks ago. The concern is basically what, my good friend here is outlined, and it involves the permit issued by the Board of Health. The Board of Health has no authority to issue what they did to one contractor, what will be asked by other contractors. There are five or six contractors in the town of Falmouth that pick up canisters. And I happen to represent Precinct Two that has a great number of canisters. Now, we brought this issue before you some two weeks ago. We feel that this should be addressed by the Board of Selectmen either in a public issue through the law. I don't know what the administrator has done about it. And I think you should make public that the Board of Selectmen, only the Board of Selectmen can deal with public safety issues, which was what was addressed under the public health hearing. So they issued their thing under public health and the bylaws clearly states only if it determines off our collection it's necessary to protect public health. But what they talked about was public safety. So the Board of Selectmen, in their authority of issuing the permits for rubbish contracting pickups, I think there are five commercial pickup contractors in the town of Falmouth. And I am very concerned that if you don't take the action soon enough, other contractors are going to come in with the same request. So again, I'm here, this is the second time, and I think this is a serious enough issue, which is a violation of a bylaw that we fought very hard to get to protect the residential abutters of commercial enterprises. And again, I want to thank you for allowing me to speak and I will, Mr. Cunha and I will not let this issue die. It is too important. It's a violation of a bylaw. And you people are supposed to protect the general public under the bylaw of public health and public safety. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dufrain. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on a public comment? Okay, then we will move on to the minutes of the meeting of August 11th.
Madam Chair, I'd move approval of the August 11th meeting minutes of Board of Selectmen.
A second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Unanimous, the motion carries. The minutes of August 11th executive session.
We have four different items. If it's possible, I would move approval of all four and not to release.
Second. Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Unanimous, the motion carries. So now we will move to the summary of actions. And the first are administrative orders. The first is to approve the grant application for the bivocal conservation area parking lot. This is a request of the 300 Committee. Item two is to approve the Coast Guard Rescue exercise, which is not Menon Beach, now it is Bristol Beach, on Wednesday, August 27th from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
I don't want to hold that, but okay.
Want to hold it? Okay. Item three is vote to accept a donation from the Old Silver Beach Homeowners Association in the amount of $650 for the beach department donation account. A four is to approve the N-Star petition to install underground conduit and handhole at 77 Sitters Pond Road. Number five, we have been asked to take that off the table for tonight and bring it up at a later time. So we will not take up number five, which is the Notanico Woods Project, which is an affordable housing project right off the Woods Hole Road. And the last item, number six, is to authorize the town manager to execute the GHD Contract Amendment Number Six to prepare the amended target watershed management plan and adaptive management plan. This is an amendment to, this is an amendment to Amendment Six because DEP requested some further language be included in Amendment Six. And I think you have a copy of that. So we're going to look for a vote to approve items one, three, four, and six.
So move?
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? None opposed? The motion carries. Now, back to item two. Doug, you held it?
Well, I was not going to hold it, but I did want to just comment that I'm happy to approve it, but I do request that the next year or the next time the Coast Guard does this, really the requests need to come earlier and to all the different agencies. We've heard from the Police Department, Fire Department, and Harbor Master that really they had not been contacted in a timely way for this. And that's something we do support, but we need all, we're trying to get the message out to everyone, whether it's the Coast Guard, whether it's churches, whether it's people looking for signs. This stuff has to be done in time that we can actually hold the process correctly.
Yes, and I think hopefully there is, yes, did you want to speak?
I agree on that. Our initial request was put in. We were supposed to be on the agenda four weeks ago. We were dropped from the agenda for undisclosed reasons. We were supposed to be on the agenda again two weeks ago and we were dropped from the agenda again for unknown reasons. So that's why we're looking at two days away now.
Well, the issue is not just being on the agenda. The issue is actually getting these applications to the beach department, fire department, police department. That that's actually the first process. Once it gets to them, then it comes to us to go into our agenda. And that may be the reason it wasn't put on our agenda is because those departments hadn't received the request.
Okay. But I think the town manager's office can help you with that process and I think there's something in writing that will guide you the next time if you want to do something.
I appreciate clarification. We'll work on it next time.
Okay. Very good. So now we need a motion. I'm sorry, Sam.
Should this not come through the special events working group as a matter of course so that they get prompted on all these items?
That's very true, but unfortunately that didn't happen.
Okay.
The Special Events Committee, I think, met the end of July, was it? And they haven't met again. This came, this just, there was like a glitch somewhere along the line, but I think we've worked it out. I think the Coast Guard knows now what our process is and now it's kind of too late to go through that. So now it's up to us now to actually approve it.
Thank you.
Becky had a question.
Becky?
My question to you is that I think when we first talked about this, it was at 8:00 and you were going to have different exercises, you were going to be practicing. And I think we probably kind of visualized Menon Beach. And now if we're back at Bristol Beach, that's fine, I can do that also. But I notice that the time now goes for a social time from, say, it's 12:00 until 4:00. So it seems to me as if the greater emphasis on the time is on the social time. I'm just, need a clarification.
Yes, ma'am. So the actual training exercise will be the morning session from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM. And then the social time will be 12:00 PM and onwards. The social time is going to be barbecue, cookout, eating food, and it will only use part of the beach. So it's restrained in that effect.
I just believe the first time that I heard about it, there wasn't that added time. It was just for the training. And I thought about that on our beach during the day when the public would be there. And I don't know how much of the beach you're going to use. You say just one end of it. I was thinking it was more down by the edge of the water and out into the water. And it wasn't until this notice came in today that it was, there was an addition to it. So I'm just making a comment about it in saying that it seems as if it was planned and, but maybe I didn't hear you say that.
I apologize for the confusion, ma'am. We were planning originally, maybe we did not adequately convey that last time.
I think I do remember some mention of it, but it was not as, in my mind, as.
It wasn't the emphasis of the day.
Right.
I think it might be.
Madam Chair, one more question. What kind of publicity are you going to do for the event?
Unfortunately, we don't have any publicity plans. It's essentially a word-of-mouth event unless the Falmouth Enterprise does something. But due to the short timeline here, it's just approved today and it's Wednesday, we didn't want to advertise anything. And then I'll hold it.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions, comments?
I would move approval of the Coast Guard Rescue exercise on Bristol Beach, Wednesday, August 27th, from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
A second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? None opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So... The next item under business is to vote to reduce the membership of the Coast upon Management Committee membership from nine members to seven. This was a request from George Hampson, who has made it very clear to us that they have significant issues with obtaining a quorum. And I think he and the committee thought it best if maybe their membership were reduced and thereby they would be able to have a quorum and conduct their business. Mr. Hampson, did you want to make any comments or?
I experienced this, George Hampson, North Falmouth. We experienced increasing the, not the quorum, but the membership in the planning board and it didn't work out well. And it isn't working out well in this situation either. So that's why I requested it. It's often a recommended number.
Yeah, it's often a recommended number for a committee anyway.
Yeah.
Is seven members. So it fits very well within our customary structure for committees.
I could explain it, but I didn't want to take the time to do that. It had to do with different organizations that we had doing and we just lost those members. So we have a team now that's working, but we just lost one of our members. And.
Well, we haven't interviewed.
That's correct.
And it's about one minute.
Yeah.
All right. Becky?
How many members do you have now, George, that are coming to your?
We have four now. We have four. That's correct.
And you'd like to work it up to seven?
Yeah, eventually, but we will have, if everything works out tonight, we will have five.
And then you'll have a quorum?
That's correct. Yeah.
Okay.
I would move that we delegate the membership of the Coast upon Management Committee at seven members.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? None opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, George, and good luck for your new membership.
Thank you for your service.
Yes. All right, now we have, we have a vacancy, obviously, as we just discussed on the Coast upon Management Committee. And we have an applicant. His name is Mitchell Buck. Mr. Buck, are you here? You are here. Would you like to have a seat at the table? Thank you. And maybe you could tell us why you're interested in the committee, what you hope to bring to the committee from your own background? That would be helpful.
Sure. Well, as you know, my name is Mitchell Buck. I work at the Woods Hole Group. I've been there for seven years. I'm a professional coastal engineer, registered in the state of Mass with my license. And I've worked on a number of coastal science and engineering projects over the years, both locally in the town of Falmouth and Cape Island, and also we have projects that span the entire coast nationally and some international projects. So I feel that I have a lot of experience and knowledge that I can use to help the committee with decisions on the local coastal ponds.
Okay, anyone have questions? Yes, Doug?
Not completely relevant, but I'm just curious. Where's, what's your background geographically before you came to the Woods Hole-Falmouth area?
So I was born and raised in Buffalo, New York. I grew up on the Great Lakes, spent a lot of time there. That's where I kind of got my love for big water. And then I moved to the Mid-Atlantic and went to school at Johns Hopkins University. So I spent a lot of time on Chesapeake Bay and the Mid-Atlantic. And then I took, and then I went to graduate school at the University of Delaware. So I spent time on the Delaware Shore and Delaware Bay and then came up here seven years ago to work for the Woods Hole Group, so. Yep. And this is the, this is the favorite water that I've been to so far, so.
Thank you very much.
Becky, you had a question?
Have you ever done committee work? Have you ever participated in any of your other areas you just mentioned?
I have not.
This is your first time?
This has been my first one.
And do you know anyone on the committee?
I know George.
That's a, that's a good one.
I knew Steve.
Okay.
And I knew Chuck Martenson.
Okay. All right, I was just curious. I mean, it's a very impressive background. And we're very pleased that you have applied to be on this committee because it's a very serious committee. And it does need to have a full group in their decisions. And I think we all listen to what happens with the coastal waterways. So I'm very pleased that you applied.
Thank you. I've been very privy to what's been going on in the last couple of years, especially most recently with, you know, the town issues and the vote that we had recently this May. So, you know, it'd be a very good time for me to join because I could, you know, help with decisions that are made in regards to that.
And I would say that it's also most important where everyone's talking about climate change and where Falmouth fits into this and with all of our discussions. So I'm very pleased you're going to be part of, well, that's presumptuous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have a question? I have a question. Based on your knowledge or having, having had discussions with George Hampson and your knowledge of the area, because you've been here for a while, what do you think some of the priorities for the Coastal Management Committee ought to be going, going in the future?
Well, I mean, essentially, I think the number one issue is water quality and how do we address that? So all the issues that have been, have come up recently with regards to, say, sewer-ing, whether to do that or not, those are important issues that we need to look at and discuss because not only are they big decisions, but they're expensive and require a lot of time and effort in order to construct. So that's something that we really need to consider is water quality and how we move forward with, say, waste handling in the future.
Anybody else?
I would move appointment of Mitchell Buck to the Coastal Ponds, Coastal Pond Management Committee, term ending June 30th, 2017, I believe, is the date.
A second. Is there a second?
A second.
You second? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Unanimous, the motion carries. Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you.
I'm sure we'll be very happy to have your knowledge and resources. Yes, Mr. Hampson?
Can I make a comment and?
Sure. Can you come to the microphone if you would?
I'd like to mention that we have a few members here tonight. Chuck Martenson, who is the deputy director, not one of the members necessarily, but he's our godfather, takes care of us. John Ross is here. Doug Brown. Charles McCaffery could not make it. But I'd like to suggest that Chuck Martenson make a few comments about our committee and how important it is. And we're not going to take any time doing that. It's just that we've got to go forward on this. We've got to do something. We'd like to do it for this town meeting or have the Selectmen take an action. Chuck, are you here?
Yes, he is here. Chuck?
Chuck Martenson, Deputy Director, Marine Environment. I obviously wasn't expecting to speak tonight. I've been in uniform. But just to sum up, obviously, the committee's been working very closely with a number of different local neighborhoods, the West Falmouth community as well as the neighborhoods up in the Green Pond area. And we're excited, obviously, to have Mitch on board now. Certainly, we do want to move forward with the, with the coastal actual, the peace to it, the peace which will be the living document that moves on from all the, from all the ground truthing that we've done in the area and benchmarking in the area of what we have there. So I think just to kind of speak for the committee as a whole, not on behalf of, you know, on behalf of everyone, from what I've heard, we are certainly very excited to hopefully move forward, perhaps at this fall town meeting with a coastal management plan for those, for those, for at least the Green Pond area. And we would certainly look for support from the Board of Selectmen. We have been in front of the Board of Selectmen a few times and will remain, obviously, in close touch with the board on that. And I think that's all. Any questions the board members might have or?
When do you expect to be able to provide us with that document?
There has been a number of documents that actually have been provided. I know, Mr. Patterson, you're relatively new to the, to the board. We'll see too that all the documents up to this point are provided to all the new board members and the most recent ones as well. There has been Charles McCaffery, who has been bringing most of that material together for us.
Thank you.
Anybody else? No? Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Cunha.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item is to designate a member of the Board of Selectmen as the liaison to the Commission on Disabilities. We somehow overlooked the Commission of Disabilities. Yes, so?
I'd be happy to take that on. It's a longstanding interest of mine, but it does conflict with recreation. So if there's anyone that would take recreation, the meeting time, that's just an option. That's one option. And I also see there's a question mark at affirmative action and I think I mentioned I would take that on as well.
I'd be happy to take on the Rec Committee. I'd, I'd been the liaison before and it overlaps with the Gulf Advisor Committee also.
That seems to make sense.
Yes.
That makes sense.
All right, so.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
If I may, before you discuss a vote, again, thank you for the opportunity. Now I wear my chairman's hat. I am the chairwoman of the Falmouth Commission on Disabilities. And I would like to thank through you, Mr. Suso, for making sure this was addressed. I met with him on June 14th. And because we don't have an ADA coordinator and it'll probably be filled by attrition and my little voice tells me that we will not have an official ADA coordinator, it'll probably be the building department, who are very, who Mr. Gore and Ms. Fitzpatrick are very knowledgeable, not only in the ADA, American Disabilities Act, but the AAV, the Architectural Access Board Codes. And I watch your meetings faithfully, in all meetings on TV, and I kept wondering what happened to us. Perhaps it was an oversight, don't know. So I asked Ms. Davidson and she said she would put it on and somehow when you voted or you assigned them two years, two weeks ago, it still did not get assigned. We do meet the third Thursday, but we are moving it to the second Tuesday at 5:00 at the Silver Defense Room. We appreciate someone, we, I understand what the liaison program is all about. And we have a lot of exciting projects coming on board. And we need someone like George Swivey used to be. George, if you're watching, we sure do miss you because he was the bridge and the glue between our committee and the town, all the town departments and the administration of this town. and the town, all the town departments and the administration of this town. So right now, I am the ADA coordinator, along with being the chairperson, and I don't drive. So it's very difficult to come to site, to go to site issues. But we would welcome someone who would, you know, that we have contact with. We don't expect you to come to the meetings. We don't expect you to stay for all the meetings. Sometimes the committee members get a little chatty and have to remember that, you know, we're in time constraints. But again, we are moving our committee meeting to the third Tuesday at 5:00, only because of the holidays that fall on a Thursday. And there are other committees that meet either at 7:00 or 7:30, and they are inviting the Bullock to come and set up for their meetings. So again, I hope, we do have a liaison, and I welcome the opportunity to speak to you if you have any questions. I would happy to answer them at this time.
Just that the Agricultural Commission is already meeting third Tuesdays at 5:30 in the Civil Defense Room.
Oh, they are? No one told me that. Okay. Well, then I guess we'll go back to the third Thursday.
But could you probably use the department, hold on to your department room, I mean, I'm sure there's other space. I'm sure there's other space in the town hall you can use.
No, the problem is because access to wheelchairs. We have two wheelchairs and one scooter.
Because actually recently, I think, I mean, it's listed here as coastal defense, but I think our comment recently has been meeting in.
Right. So I guess we'll be, we'll be leaving it on the third Tuesday and we'll have to.
Okay.
Well, well, we'll ask Mr. Suso to sort this out.
Okay.
Certainly, we'll get back to you.
Okay, great. So do we, going to have a liaison? Is it still on hold until we find out what's going on?
Have a liaison? The Board intends to make that appointment tonight.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do you have any other questions?
So the motion will be that Doug will be the liaison to the Recreation Committee, and Sue Moran will be the liaison to the Affirmative Action Committee. No, I mean the disabilities.
Commission on Disabilities.
And affirmative action, is that right?
Correct, but I, if there is a change, I will not make any meetings on Commission on Disability, but I'll be happy to keep my position through all the means of communication, and I'll be very active with that. Thank you.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm a little confused, are we? Can you clarify that for me?
The clarification is that Sue Moran will be the liaison to the affirmative, to the, to the Committee on Disabilities, to the Commission on Disabilities.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. So that will be the motion, to appoint Sue Moran to the Commission on Disabilities and Doug to the affirmative action.
You're right.
No, I mean to the Recreation Committee. I'm already confused. That's it.
And also me to affirmative action.
And, and you to affirmative action as well?
That's the motion.
Okay. So there are two, two appointments for Sue Moran and one for Doug. All right, that's the motion. Would anyone care to second it?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you very much. And it's nice to see the same person is going to be for the offer of action, because we have similar concerns and issues.
Thank you, James, for being here.
I agree.
Okay, are there any reports on the Selectmen? We still have a few minutes if anyone cares to make a report. Rebecca?
I'll just start out that I went to the Beach Committee last week, and it's a well-organized committee. I told them I was impressed with how much responsibility they have in this town. And they expressed all of the activities that they are in charge of. I think it's a tight group, and it's to be complimented for the amount of work they do.
Great. Anybody else? Yes, Sam?
I can report that I attended the Conservation Commission meeting on Wednesday, and there were a number of public hearings that were conducted at that time. And one of the things that impressed me, because it was my first meeting, is how closely their concerns are aligned with our coastal management issues. And also how much they basically are trying to look out for some of the applicants' interests in terms of floodwater concerns as not only just the environmental issues with respect to shellfish and eelgrass and such things. So it was, it was an interesting new experience for me to see them actually trying to make sure that the interests of the applicants was looked after as well as looking out for environmental concerns.
Anybody else? No? The Town Managers' Report?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple items. As the Board is aware, on this past Thursday evening, we held a very productive Second Neighborhood Meeting with the Little Pond Area Landowners to provide information on the upcoming wastewater project, which will affect all of them as residents and landowners. The evening included a PowerPoint presentation and a lively, this question-and-answer session involving multiple town representatives. We had both year-round as well as some seasonal residents in attendance. The first meeting held with landowners was back in April, shortly before the municipal election. The updated informational PowerPoint presentation, which was given this past Thursday evening, has also been placed on the town website for all to view. The meeting was further filmed by FCTV and will be available for viewing by those unable to attend. And certainly additional processes will be, be taking place moving forward. Also, as a reminder, although it's hard to believe, one week from today is Labor Day. Comes as early as it possibly can, September 1st in this iteration. As per usual, town hall and town administrative offices will be closed on that holiday. And the Board's next regular business meeting will be Monday, September 8th, back in the Selectmen's meeting room. We've also confirmed that the follow-up joint meeting with the Planning Board that we discussed when you met with them last week in joint session will be at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, September 23rd, also in the Selectmen's meeting room. And that concludes my remarks, Madam Chair. Thank you.
I wanted to mention that, if I can find it, that on September 12th, the Cape Cod Selectmen and Counselors Association will be meeting. I'm not exactly sure whether it's in Orleans or whether it's in Sandwich, but I can let you know. The meetings start at 7:30 AM, so, I mean. If it's, if it's down Cape, you have to get up really early in the morning to get there. And I will give, I will make sure you get a copy of the agenda so that if you're available on that Friday to go. Anybody else have anything they want to add? In that case, we will adjourn.
Move adjournment? Or are we adjourning it or?
Well, we're going to recess because we will, we will be back in session in about 10 more minutes, so we'll, we'll just go recess. Okay, that's it.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. And then first, we need to convene the Finance Committee. So is the Chair of the Finance Committee?
Yes, I'd like to call the Finance Committee meeting to order.
And now please rise for the flag of allegiance.
The flag of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, limited in justice for all.
I have asked the Chairs of both committees if we could take the agenda out of order. And the first item on the agenda will be the Board of Selectmen will interview Mary Harris, who has applied for an appointment to the Finance Committee. Ms. Harris, you could come forward and I think at least get somewhat closer to your microphone and tell us about your interest in the Finance Committees, what some of your priorities are and how you, how you think you will be an effective member.
My interest.
I already know that, but you can tell everybody that.
My interest in the Finance Committee has grown out of being a town meeting member and wanting to fully understand exactly how the financial operations of Falmouth work. I have been a treasurer in the past of several nonprofits and continue to be a treasurer here in Falmouth. So I'm very familiar with finances, and it was also most of my career as an owner of a third-party administration firm, which is a great deal of accounting and working with investments. I particularly thought that that would be, that the Finance Committee would be an appropriate place for me to be able to use some of my experience and expertise in the area of retirement plans. I am very familiar with the operation of defined benefit pension plans, having worked with them for 35 years, and so thought that particularly that would be an area I'd be interested in.
Wait, all right, just anyone have a question for Mary? Everybody on the board?
Well, I will. I, I was waiting. See, you, you thought you were just going to walk away. So in, in thinking about finances and thinking about how the public manages their finances and the different people that are involved, can you do a contrast in the way you have had management skills and with your idea of what happens on the public side?
On the public side, it's quite different because, of course, you have a tax base. And you have all of the state and municipal regulations that you have to follow. And I recognize that I'm going to need to familiarize myself with most of those. However, no matter whether you're working with a for-profit, which was most of my career, or nonprofits, which I have a great deal of experience with, or municipalities, numbers always add up in the end and they have meaning. And they should be understandable and clear, transparent, and understandable to everybody who's looking at them. And I think I have a particular way of being able to explain things to people once I understand them fully myself that could be helpful.
Thank you. Doug?
Do you have an automatic reaction to an override?
No, I have no reaction whatsoever to an override. It depends on what it's for and whether it's prudent, whether a good case is made for it. I think I keep a very open mind on all issues.
Judy?
Hey, Mary, we have discussed it, but I just want you to say that you do know what the commitment is, the number of meetings and the busy times.
I do understand the commitment. That was fully explained to me, and I'm prepared to accept all of that.
Great.
Any, anyone else in the Finance Committee? I guess.
Is this a vote just of the board of selectmen or is it the same Finance Committee and board of selectmen votes?
This is a joint vote of the Finance Committee and Board of Selectmen. So I will ask the Board of Selectmen to make a motion.
I would move appointment of Mary Harris to the Finance Committee. The only thing I'm unsure, these are one-year terms of legal Finance Committee, that's what the committee appointed.
No, and I don't have it with me.
Is it a three-year term?
I think it is a three-year term. Yeah, it, most of them are three, Doug, but then it depends on when somebody gets off the committee.
So this would be a three-year term, and I believe June 3rd, 2017. Second?
Second. Any discussion on the motion? So through the Board of Selectmen. Let's start with the Board of Selectmen and then move to the Finance Committee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Aye in favor, the Finance Committee?
Say aye.
Aye.
Wow.
I guess the vote is unanimous.
Good job, Mary.
So welcome, Mary. Very delighted to have you on the Finance Committee. Especially with all your experience with retirement system. And we're looking forward to your expertise on WCA, which are other personnel employee bases, which will probably be the next one in the state, is to really get moving on how to define WCA in the future. All right. Yes. So now I would ask each committee member to introduce themselves so that the people at home know who all of us are, and I'll start with the School Committee.
I'm Susan Augusta, I'm Chairman of the School Committee.
I'm Alan Jacobs.
Leah Palmer.
Bonnie Gifford, Superintendent.
Laura Peterson, Vice Chair, School Committee.
Judy Fenwick.
Heidi Marata.
Kelly Welch.
Terry Medeas, Secretary of the School Committee.
Donna Addison-Earl.
All right, the Finance Committee?
Nick Lowell, Finance Committee.
Chuck Eastman, Finance Committee.
Tom Brady.
Judy Mignani, Chairman.
Mary Harris, new. Jennifer McGuire, real.
Wendy Vogel.
Sue Smith, Secretary.
Megan Nushbraga.
Okay, and the Board of Selectmen? Oh, I'm sorry.
Paul Sellers.
Peter Jakomozzi.
And for the Board of Selectmen, I'm Mary Puff Flynn, Chairman.
Todd Jones, Vice Chair.
Sue Moran, Selectmen.
Sam Patterson.
Rebecca Moffett.
Great. Well, welcome all. And I look forward to a very interesting and lively discussion tonight on our annual operating budget process. Yes, Nick?
Mr. Suso, I don't believe he's injured himself.
Oh, Mr. Suso, Town Manager.
Certainly, Joy and Suso, Town Manager. And my colleague, Assistant Town Manager, is also at the table.
And our Collector, Patricia O'Donnell. Okay, so I would invite our Finance Director, Jennifer Petit. I think she has a PowerPoint presentation on the Annual Operating Budget Process.
I figured this out, didn't realize it would be a handout.
Thank you. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yeah.
Is it on? I think I still.
Oh, it's just for TV. Okay, so you don't need to, you don't really need to hear me. Well, I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight to talk about the annual budget process. I was asked to do this a couple months ago when we knew that we were going to have new members specifically on the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen, and actually, we have a new member on the Finance Committee. And so I was happy to, you know, put something together with Julian and Heather, and thank you for your input into this presentation. So when I approached the presentation, this isn't an FY16 budget presentation. This really is informational. I tried to keep the numbers, not a lot of numbers on this presentation. I really wanted people to understand that when I approach the budget process, how I approach it. Because I, I'll put the budget together and, you know, make a recommendation to Julian, who makes a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen, who transmits it to the Finance Committee. But I just, you know, wanted to have everybody understand, you know, what I look at, why I look at it the way I do. And I know it's, it's not all about me, although I like to think it is at times, but I just think it gives a real insight to the process, since I've been putting budgets together for a number of years for different communities. So I'm a one-man band here, so budget planning. For me, it really all starts with budget planning. What are we looking at in the next five years? Because if I know what we're looking at, I can plan and I can prioritize. And it's really important. And I'm going to keep getting back to the bond rating agencies. When we issue debt, if we have a good bond rating, if you will, or a good credit rating, we pay less in interest costs. So it's really important to have good financial policies, good planning, good fiscal plans, in order to approach that benchmark. So with the budget forecasting, I do have a three-to-five-year budget forecast that I look at. And it prioritizes the spending plans. It looks, you know, what am I looking at in the next three to five years that I might not normally see? It really makes me get it down into the detail. And I'm able to establish contingency plans, especially on the economy and things of that nature. So it really does come down to, you know, putting a budget forecast and some planning together. We also look at the 10-year capital plan. It helps us assess the future infrastructure, and it helps us plan for future spending. Where I might look at a capital plan today and know that in two years, we might need a ladder truck, which is, and I just use that as an example because it's expensive. And how do we want to pay for that? And what are we looking at, you know, for finances? Also, too, since I'm trying to really stick to a narrative with the budget process, if anybody has any questions, feel free to raise your hand. I really want it to be maybe a discussion. There might be a lot of information here that you might not want to wait until the end of the meeting and to ask. So if you'd like to ask your questions, you know, during the presentation, there's no problem at all. Just feel free to raise your hand, and I'll try to expand on, on what you're asking. A balanced budget. We're required to have a balanced budget in order to set our tax rate. We set our tax rate in November, in November, and people might ask. We set our tax rate in November, and people might ask, well, what's setting your tax rate? It's really when we tell the Department of Revenue what the voted appropriations are at town meeting, and then we let them know what our anticipated revenue is. And I'm going to spend some time on anticipated revenue because I really think that's where people get confused. Because we don't vote on the revenue at town meeting, we only vote on the spending, and people focus on the spending. But I want to talk a little bit about the revenue because we need to have the revenue to support the appropriations that we vote. So our estimated revenue has to equal our voted appropriations, and, you know, we give that to the Department of Revenue in order to set the tax rate. We're highly regulated by the Department of Revenue. They look at, they certify our financial statements, they certify our tax rate, they ask for a lot of documents, a lot of them are certified, they come out and they go through our books, especially when we're certifying our financial statements. So we are highly regulated by the Department of Revenue. And so when I approach the budget, I build the budget on previous fiscal year, taking into consideration economic factors. What does that mean? When I look at the revenue, I look at, you know, let me go to the next slide, it might explain it a little bit better. So when I look at revenue, we really have four sources of revenue when we support the budget. And when I'm talking about the budget tonight, I'm talking about the operating budget, discussing the reoccurring expenses. I'm not talking about the one-time expenses. Because what really supports good fiscal policy are reoccurring revenues for reoccurring expenses. You don't want to use one-time revenue for one-time expenses. So in the operating bud, you know, budget, when we voted at town meeting, it's in the middle, and I brought my warrant book, because there's a lot of information in the warrant book that people ask me about, and they don't know that it's in here. So I just wanted to bring it tonight, but the operating budget really is what we vote on in the middle, right here. This is our reoccurring expenses that we know that we'll have every year to support, you know, the town's operations. And so we have four sources. We have our tax levy, we have state aid, a lot of the state aid is Chapter 70 educational aid, unrestricted government aid, which is lottery, the old lottery, they call it, unrestricted government aid, and various reimbursements. That's where we'll have reimbursement for your veterans' benefits, for some abatement exemptions, and we always want to estimate those as well. Then we have, excuse me, our local receipts, our motor vehicle excise, which really is driven by the economy. When we have, you know, a bad economy, people aren't buying new cars, and so our motor vehicle excise goes down. Same thing with the hotel motel and meals, our licenses and permits, our building permits. You know, if people aren't building, our permit revenue goes down. So we really need to look at all these factors when we're looking at projections. And other departmental revenue, beach, ambulance, and dump, gets put into that category. And then we have other available funds, and they're not in the general fund, they're in a separate, they're segregated from the general fund. They're segregated from when we vote on the operating budget, the revenue is put somewhere else. And we look at what is brought in every year, and it supports our operating budget. Wetlands, we use a minimal amount to support our conservation department. Parking meters supports some of our police functions, and our steamship authority fees supports our public safety. And if you want to look at other available funds, it's all in the motion in the back of town meeting. So all the information is here. So in FY '15, our tax levy is 74% of our reoccurring revenues, our state aid is eight, local receipts 15, and our other available funds is 3%. Also, other available funds supports our debt, and I'll get into that a little bit. I didn't want to get into debt too much, that can be a whole other presentation, a whole other two hours with our debt policy, so I didn't really want to confuse the issue, but I would be happy to take questions.
Jen? I think on that previous, it's wonderful that we do not really depend on state aid. Falmouth has done extraordinarily well using the tax levy.
You're absolutely right. And I do want to say with that 8%, even though it's low, that does include a $1.3 million reimbursement for the school construction, previous school construction, and that supports our debt. So it really is, when we look at the cherry sheet, if you will, when the Department of Revenue or the state settles their budget, it's even less than that. So you're absolutely right, Judy, thanks for pointing that out.
Jennifer? I just wanted to mention about state aid. Our state aid is 8%. There are other communities where the state aid is 70% and 90%, and I'm sure some of you know that, like the town of New Bedford. I think almost their entire budget almost is made up of state aid. So could you talk about, just a little bit about why ours is only 8% and not 60% or 80%?
I might not be able to answer that question. I wasn't anticipating it. It really comes down to, I think a lot of it is your Chapter 70 funding formula for your schools. I think the high state aid really is that, along with your unrestricted government aid, and there's formulas, and not being familiar with some of the other systems or the other towns of what's driving their percentage so high. A lot of the communities that I've worked in previously has had a low state aid. I've never really worked in a community with, had a lot of high state aid, but you're right, some of the larger systems, larger school systems that are struggling, and I know it's formula-based, are a lot higher.
And I think it is tied in with education in some fashion, and maybe that could be for a different discussion, but some of the communities who receive a lot of state aid, usually it centers around, I mean, for educational funds.
The reason why having a low state aid is a good thing is because it means we're much more in control of what's happening to our budget than, and I think a lot of people say, why would you want to have low percentage? Wouldn't you love to have the state paying for more of our budget? But then you're tied as to what you can really do if all of a sudden it decreases.
No, you're absolutely right. It's more of a rest the high, because we don't have any control over it at all, really.
There's another statement that is there periodically, and that is because there's an impression that the Cape is wealthy, and because of the tax, the tax revenues come in, property tax revenues that come in. And in actuality, when you look at the salaries of employees, the people who work here on the Cape, they are not, that group of people do not earn that significant amount of money. So the wealth does not come from people who are employed, it comes from other sources, such as property values and property taxes. And that then, because of the way the formula is set up on statewide, then you end up getting less money from the state because there's that impression of a certain wealth factor. But it has nothing to do with people who are working. It is confusing, so maybe that's for another discussion.
It is, and you're absolutely right. There's a lot of discussion at the state level about the Chapter 70 funding formula education aid, because it is weighted on property values, and just because you have higher property values doesn't mean that you can afford. And it comes into a net school spending formula with the foundation budget, and it can get a little complicated, if that is correct. So when approaching the budget process and estimating revenue, what I, I look at really the tax levy growth. It's been historically that you're able to raise your tax levy 2.5% without an override. That's Proposition 2.5 that came in in 1980. So we can raise our revenue by 2.5%. Our levy, although our budget is 115 million without the, well, it's 121 million, but without excluded debt, it's like 106 or 107. But 80 million of our tax levy, not including the excluded debt, that's our levy, times 2.5% is an additional 2 million. And that's just, you know, straightforward math. And then we've been estimating our new growth at 600,000. That's really hard to estimate when you're going into the budget process. That's another issue. I'll be starting to, I'll send out the memo for the budget probably in the next six weeks. So I'll be starting to look at the budget for FY '16, beginning next July, and the next six to 10 weeks, and looking at revenues then. I know that we can do that, but the rest of it, really, you have to be conservative because that ebbs and flows and it changes over the next, you know, six to eight months. So we look at about 2 million.
Can you explain that a little bit more? What do you mean by new growth estimate? Is that new businesses, new homes, that kind of thing?
Yep, that's a great question. New growth is, it could be, it could be a new business. If you add on to your house, then that would be new growth. If you build a house, that would be new growth, business coming in. A big portion of our new growth was that, it used to be Woodbrier, I can't remember the name of the community. Yep, we just captured that, that was big new growth, right there. Should I be taking, do we want to take questions from the public right now?
Take questions at the end.
Okay. Thank you. So that's really what your new growth estimate is. And sometimes it comes in higher, but we want to be conservative because we don't want to base our budget on 600,000 and then have it come in. Now, the value of that is a lot more, it's times the tax rate, but we don't want it to come in at 400,000 because then we'll have a shortfall when we go to set our tax rate in November. So we want to be conservative with our estimates.
I'll go ahead and ask Mr. Tigger's question. Assuming the 2.5% is what we always do, should we defend that assumption every year as opposed to saying, we don't actually have to do 2.5%, we could do 1%?
You're absolutely right, and it really comes down to your budget policy. When the selectmen set their, and I will get into that, the selectmen set their budget policy in October. And I started off with the revenue and what I look at, so I wanted people to understand what I would recommend to the town manager to recommend to the board of selectmen, and understand where I'm coming from, in order for the board of selectmen to set their budget policy. But you're right, we don't have to use the 2.5%. That's the maximum growth that we can use.
I just, how is it calculated for, like, example, in T-Ticket, the T-Ticket Park? So when that came off the tax rolls, where does, where do you guys make that calculation for those types of purchases by the town?
Really, what it is, it's a shift. So it doesn't, it's not that your 2.5% goes down, it just gets shifted to other areas of your values. And the tax rate, I didn't really put this on the slide, but let me talk about the tax rate for a second, because that's really important. When people say our values go down, then our taxes are going up. Your taxes aren't going up, your tax rate is going up, it's a formula. So the assessed values go down, the tax rate goes up, your assessed values go up, the tax rate goes down. We can't increase the levy more than 2.5%. So if you're in a neighborhood that had a lot of sales, high sales, and when they went out to value your property and your value went up more than what the overall value went up, then your taxes could go up more than 2.5%. But that means somebody else, somewhere else, it's going to go down. So it all evens out throughout the whole community.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
There's that saying, some go up, some go down, and some stay the same.
Absolutely.
What goes down?
Can I just go back to the 2.5%? I wasn't clear, is that decided every year that that's the level we want to?
That is, that is, that is correct.
So every year we decide that? And that's decided at the board of selectmen level?
Yes, for the next fiscal year. According to the charter, and I'll get to that in a minute, but it is a good question. According to the charter, the board of selectmen sets their budget policy for the next fiscal year, and that's in their budget policy. You know, that's what they'll discuss and what we might recommend. And let me tell you a little bit about my experience with Proposition 2.5, not necessarily here, but generally, a lot of communities do maximize their 2.5% because this is really the only growth you're going to see in revenue at this point in time. And you have, you know, you have your fixed costs of health insurance, you have, you know, your liability insurance, you have your retirement assessment, and then you also have your union salary contract negotiation settlement, salary and wages. And those are somewhat fixed costs, and so there is growth in those areas every year. And so in order to maximize that, you're using your 200, and then your 2 million and your 600,000, and a lot of times that still is not enough. But we've been able to, I know, I believe Falmouth has maximized their 2.5% levy capacity over a number of years, and every community that I've worked in has also done that. Any other questions about? And what I wanted to point out is that the budget being 100, you know, without your excluded debts, like 106 million, your only growth is in the area of the 80 million when we look at the next year's revenue. So the 2.5% is 2 million, it's not 2.5% on 106 million or, you know, without your excluded debt, although we vote the 121. And I just wanted to point that out. Your state aid, looking at, when I put the budget together in October and I look at state aid for the next fiscal year, you know, we might get some word out from the state of how the receipts are coming in. A lot of times you don't really know until January, when the governor will attend the Mass Municipal Association Conference, where we are with revenues. This year, we were pretty strong. We knew that the state was, the revenues were coming in a lot more than forecasted. They were adjusting the Chapter 70 formula, so in January, we knew that it was, it was a good, and the MMA was lobbying the legislature to increase the state aid because they had decreased it in the past. So we were pretty certain that the governor's budget wouldn't go below that, and then the legislator made a statement at one point that it wouldn't. So we're able to, you know, set our budget, and that's why last year, when we were going through the budget process, and why we had the changes and the revenue kept going up, and this was the major area, when it was because of the state, out of our control. But we like to, you know, wait and get all the information, but we need to have a place to start, and this is really where we would start. And a lot of times, you know, the other thing I'll do is I'll talk to other communities, too. There have been years when I'll put a budget together, and we know that we have weak state receipts, we know we might be in some problems, so we'll estimate the budget on a 5% state aid decrease, just to be conservative. And again, this budget really isn't finalized until late June. So you look, and you look, so then we have our local receipts, which are economically driven, like I was discussing before, you have your motor vehicle excise, hotel motel, licenses and permits. You really want to be conservative when you're estimating your receipts. Basically, the policy would be, or I would recommend, although I don't think we've had really a discussion about that, is at this point in time, if you were going to increase your state, increase your local receipts, we'd want to institute a new program that would draw, that we would know would draw in more revenue in order to support that program, in order to keep it level. This is where a lot of communities can get into trouble, because they don't want to level fund their local receipts, and then they'll keep creeping them up, and then you'll have a bad few years in the economy, and now you have a budget set on local receipts that are really capping out on what you're bringing in. And then when they don't come in, like you estimate, estimated, you have a revenue deficit. And what is a revenue deficit? Okay, there's two things that can happen. The Department of Revenue, when you go to set your tax rate, said, can say, no, we're not setting your tax rate, they're not conservative enough, you're estimating more than what you're bringing in, you need to go back to town meeting and revote your budget. That's one thing that can happen. The other thing that can happen is that you can have a revenue deficit, and so when you close the fiscal year, you didn't bring in your anticipated revenues, and there's a formula that you would do to do that, to see if you do have a revenue deficit, and there's certain factors that you can look at. And then you have to take that money of that deficit, and then you have to raise it on your next year's re-tax rate. In other words, you need to find the money in order to raise that, and you might have to go back to town meeting in order to cut your expenditures to find the money to raise the revenue deficit. So there's a lot of things that can happen when you're not conservative. And so when you approach, when I approach the budget process, I can be very conservative on the revenue, especially as we move forward, and, you know, when we can get, like last year when we get good news, there's other times we can get bad news, and if your budget's too high, you know, what do you do? And then when we go to set your tax rate, really, your local receipts is the only place you can go if there is an issue, you know, so you want to make sure you have enough room. And then we have other available funds, and we'll...
Jennifer, you have a question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
On that matter, if you overestimate revenues and you end up with a deficit, and the state reviews that, do they ever issue penalties to communities if they don't budget properly, or maybe the following year the same issue occurred? I don't know, I just...
It's a great question. If it happened in one year, they probably wouldn't. They would just make you raise that money. But if you continually did it, and if you continually have issues with the DOR, then they can put you on what's called a DOR watch list, and you're not using best practices and things of that nature. And that could not just be with your estimating revenues, they just won't really, if you keep doing it, they just won't set your tax rate, and they'll say, go back to town meeting. But with other issues, with excluded debt and things of that nature, if they catch something and they ask you to fix it... something and they ask you to fix it and you don't, there are communities that can go onto that list, and it's, that's really not good for your bond rating.
Do we run a deficit?
No, not, not now, no. And then we have our other available funds, which I, we discussed, and I level funded that from, you know, the previous fiscal year. We never want to, and I'm just going to use an example with your steamship authority fees, we use about three hundred and fifty thousand to support, um, fire and police. Um, and I've been using that number. And if you're bringing in three fifty, and then one year you brought in three eighty, or maybe you've built up a little bit of a balance, you, that balance can go down. So, you don't want to, um, use more than what you're bringing in, and you want to level it out over, o- over the years. You don't want to start capping that out because then again, you can get into a deficit, and when you put your budget together, DOR wants to know that you have the revenue in place to support it from your other available funds, and you have to certify that this is the revenue that we had in the bank when we went to town meeting.
Jennifer, would you explain what that revenue is for the steamship authority? I'm not sure everybody knows what that is.
Yeah, I, I knew it when I used the example. Somebody was going to ask me about this. I wasn't here when it was instituted, but their, uh, embarkation fees-
Yes.
I'm not sure of what the formula is, but I, I know it was, um, distributed to Falmouth, um, from the steamship authority, really to support the pub, you know, public safety and the traffic that comes in from the steamship authority. It was special legislation a number of years ago.
It was, um, it, for the four communities, um, which are now New Bedford, Ahianas, Thomas, Avignon, Nantucket, every ticket that someone buys on the fare, they pay, I think it's twenty-five cents per ticket.
Fifty cents.
Fifty cents now? Fifty cents per ticket, and those fees that come, those that are collected in Falmouth, come to Falmouth, those that are collected in Ahianas, that's how it works.
Thank you.
Do we also get that embarkation fee for the other ferries in town? I noticed, I was in Oak Bluffs over the weekend, and there's a sign in Oak Bluffs, um, that an embarkation fee of fifty cents one way and one dollar round trip is char, is a town mandated fee for Oak Bluffs, and-
It's, it's wherever you are traveling from, you pay that, that person who's buying a ticket pays that fee, but it goes to that community.
But I'm talking about the other ferries that are in town.
Oh, the other ferries?
This was another ferry that had this sign in Oak Bluffs. So, Oak Bluffs is benefiting, um, by a town mandated embarkation fee, and I don't believe Falmouth is, is receiving in on our end, but I-
Like, say, from the Isle of Queen. Well, my understanding, and I remember when that legislation passed, when it was only on steamship vessels.
Yeah, so that's what I'm just wondering.
So, we should look into that if there are other ferry operators that are charging that. Maybe they can, but I don't know. It was mandated mostly for the steamship authority.
Jennifer, could we go back to Donna's question for a minute about whether we run in a deficit?
Sure.
We don't currently.
Not-
But we did several years ago, when we had to go back to town meeting and everybody had to cut their budgets. And when asked if there was a cost filed by the state if you were in a deficit, the answer is no, but there were costs at the time associated with not having the tax rate set because we ended up with some short-term borrowing that cost us money because the tax rate couldn't be set.
Right, the bills didn't go out on time.
Yeah. I'll, you know, I'll talk about that generally. I wasn't here when that happened, um, but I, I will tell you that that's correct. If you can't set your tax rate, you can't send your bills out. And if you can't send your bills out, you can't get the revenue in. So, what do you do is you have to borrow in anticipation of revenue, and that isn't great for, you know, your bond rating agencies. You always want to keep that cash flow going. I think that's why, you know, I know the town of Falmouth went to a quarterly, um, you know, system of billing. But it, it's the same thing that will happen if, if you overestimate your revenues. I wasn't here at that time, so I don't know the details of it, but I knew that, yeah, at one point, I think you did have a deficit and you had furloughs, and there might have been a couple of layoffs trying to get the budget back until the revenues came back. But yeah, you're absolutely right. Those are the, and that's really comes back to what I was talking about before. If you're not bringing in the revenue to support your budget, you have to go back to town meeting to cut your budget because town meeting votes the appropriations, doesn't vote the revenues. So, you have to go back in and you have to cut, and then you have to have another, you know, town meeting, which is costly, and it could, you know, um, prevent you from, set, you can't set your tax rate until you have a balanced budget. But you're absolutely right. But I wasn't here, you know, when that happened. Did I answer it okay? Did I-
Well, I think it just points out why we are aiming more conservatively now than we used to because the revenues used to go up every year, and we got ahead of ourselves. And then when the economy crashed, we were in trouble.
Right. And we, you know, every month we look at our estimated receipts. There's a report that goes out to the finance, um, I, you know, the town manager, assistant town manager, finance committee, or, um, chair of the finance committee. Well, we do, we, we do do the report, um, and it does get distributed, but I look at it every month just to see where we are with revenues. Um, I look at where we are right now, um, so I would look at the end of July this year. It's only one month, and then I would look at where we were for the month of July last year. Um, we bring in more beach receipts in July, so you want to compare the months from this year to the months last year, and you can, you know, sometimes you'll, in, it will pop up if there seems like an issue, so then you investigate it. Sometimes it's a timing issue. It could be one day of, um, receipts that are being posted. So, you look at it and you say, "Okay," and you just make sure you're on track. And plus, you know, you keep on top of really what's going on in the economy as well. So, I was asked to give a revenue projection. And so, this is what I came up with. I'm staying away from debt right now because I think it confuses everybody, and I don't mean to say that it confuses everybody, but sometimes I just wanted to stick with the operating budget and reoccurring revenues. But again, I'll answer a question on debt. Our levy is higher than this because of the excluded debt, but the excluded debt offsets your debt. Um, so this is your preliminary levy limit for sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen. This would be your two and a half percent, and this would be your estimated new growth. As you can tell right now with new growth, there's no way to know what's going to happen in seventeen and eighteen. So, these can be adjusted, but since we've used six hundred thousand the last two or three years, we want to continue to, we can continue to use that. We've brought in a little bit more. So, we are being conservative. So, this shows you our levy growth. Our state aid, I would level fund. Um, local receipts at this point, I would level fund. And other available funds, the reason, I took this from an actual projection, the reason why that's going down, because there are other funds that you'll notice in the back of your warrant booklet when you look at your motion for your town, for your budget that supports the debt. So, that's why you'll see that going down. Community preservation, your debt drop, you know, goes down every year, um, your debt drops off, so that's why you would see that decrease. But then the corresponding, um, appropriation would decrease as well. So, that's, I wanted to, to share with you all what I look at when I put the budget together in, you know, just basic revenue projections, appropriations, knowing what, you know, the appropriations might be. And it gives you a sense of why we go in with certain budget policy and make recommendations, and why the board of selectmen have been voting for the last two or three years their budget policies. So, in accordance with the town charter, the board of selectmen adopted annual budget policy in October for the following fiscal year. Their revenue policy addresses revenue growth. We've touched on this a little bit with Proposition Two and a Half. The last two years, maybe even three years, the board of selectmen has been using two point two-five percent of levy growth to support the operating budget and point two-five percent to support the capital stabilization fund. So, we wanted to have a reoccurring revenue source going into the capital stabilization fund to support capital because we haven't been able to fund it the way we should be funding it in previous years. And they look at an appropriation policy, which will address the budget growth. You can't have budget growth unless you have revenue growth. And then we also look at the board of selectmen's, um, five-year strategic plan, and so they have goals that the town manager looks at, and they have a goal-setting session every year. And so, where do they see the community in five years and, you know, increase in certain services, um, or reorganization? Town manager will look at that and, um, and make recommendations within that two point two-five percent, uh, budget growth, revenue growth, uh, you know, with the budget. And also what we've been looking at, um, is reserves. One thing that I really, really like about this community and the budget policy for the next fiscal year is they're setting aside reoccurring revenue for the reserves, putting it away in their general stabilization fund. We're starting to fund some OPEB, our other post-employment benefit liability. Um, we also fund a workers' comp trust fund. And so, by we, by using reoccurring revenue growth and putting it into our reserves, it really puts us in a good, um, you know, fiscal model, if you will. It really makes us strong financially because we're not just trying to grab revenue here and there and just put it in our reserves. We actually have a plan for reserves, and the bond rating, rating agencies love that. They love the planning, they love when you actually, not just plan to fund, but you actually fund, you know? All exciting stuff. So, assembling the budget. Funding priorities, and I just talked about that a little bit. Contractual law obligations, salary and wages, we all know, usually about eighty percent of your budget. You know, we have union negotiations and, um, cost of living, and we all need to deal with that. Insurance, as we have our liability insurance. We also have health insurance and our retirement assessment. That's about six million that grows every year that we have to appropriate. Part of that is also an unfunded liability. So, we have that also in our operating budget. And then, so those are what we, those are our, we need to look at right away. We have to fund those when they increase. So, that would eat up a lot of your two million, two point six. Um, and then we look at funding strategic priorities and reserves. A lot of times we might need to look at a reallocation of resources. Something might go down over here, so something will increase over there. What's the, um, you know, the increase in service? Is it an increase in service to the community? Is it a decrease, or does the community not need the service anymore? So, we want to put our, um, an emphasis over here. So, we, we look at all that. We, the, again, the good things is that we have, a good thing is that we have reserves built into the base budget we want to continue to fund. If we don't continue to fund, you're starting to squeeze your budget into operating expenses, and then you're not, you don't have any place to put your reserves. You're eating up your budget, and over time, it will just drive down, um, you know, I, I believe it would get you into a deficit, and then you're not funding, you know, you don't have your rainy day fund if something comes up and then you need it, or capital stabilization funds for your large capital projects. And so, we want to continue to do that, our general stabilization, cap improvement, OPEB, and workers' comp.
Is this where the sped, um, fund is placed as well?
Yes, we do have a reserve for sped, and then we just, this is, and, and let me just tell you why sped isn't on here, and I'll talk a little bit about that. Right now, I'm talking about what we're going to fund every year, what we've built into our base budget, what we have our reoccurring revenues can support. With sped, we didn't-
It's a one-time.
It was, it was a one-time, you know, and, and we looked at that, so we were able to take some money and put it aside. We had some free cash, so we could put it aside. But again, with sped, you know, you'll have cost increases, but then you could have cost decreases. So, you want to have like a savings account, you know, in order to hedge against those years when, you, you know, you have somebody come into the community or several people come into the community and, and you have to fund that. And so, now you have a place to go without having to, you know, um, jump into your operating budget. It's something that we will continually, you know, look at, but we, it, it was a good place that we started, absolutely. And you do, and just to finish that thought, you do have some sped in your operating budget.
Oh, sure.
Not that you can, you know, increase it, because, but you do have part of it in your operating budget as well.
A good part.
Yeah. So, I figured if I put up a nice colorful slide about revenues, I should put up a nice colorful slide about the operating budget. Just to give you, um, a sense, FY, okay, the FY fifteen budget, a hundred and seventeen million. Um, and that's the revenue that we just discussed supports that. And then this just gives you a snapshot of our different, um, you know, functions of government. Again, if you go into your warrant booklet in April, and I'm hoping that after this presentation, if you go back to your warrant, April booklet, and you look at the spreadsheet that I've done, um, for FY fifteen, where it really breaks out your expenses by function and it really lays out the revenue, it will make more sense when you look at the spreadsheet. And so, if you look at the presentation and look at your spreadsheet, you know, I think it, it will, um, answer some more questions you may have, and you might be able to follow along a little bit better. But these are just the percentages. The school, you know, that doesn't include, you know, health insurance or any of the grants or anything, that's just the operating budget or any of, um, you know, your liability insurance. As you can see, our employee benefits are sixteen point nine percent. You know, I just, it's just broken into function.
Jennifer? On the, on the education percentage, does that include like the Volk School monies that we spend?
Yes, it does. I believe it, yes, it does. It's all the education function of what's in, in the budget. I just took it right from what we vote, so, yeah.
How about the health insurance portion?
No, it, it doesn't include the health insurance.
Okay. What about, um, debt service on those building construction?
Not for the school. The debt service is all voted as one number, so that's not broken out for the school. So, the school, when you, it, and I, I, let me answer the question if you don't mind. I think I know where you're going. Every year, and this is just informational, um, the school department does what's called an end-of-year report, and it has to be reported to the Department of Elementary, Elementary and Secondary Education. And it's an extensive report of your revenues and expenditures, and they use this report in order to calculate the school's net school spending. And in that report, we actually give the school department numbers that are on our side of our budget that are attributed to the school. So, it would be a debt service for your high school and your other schools that you've, um, you have bonded indebtedness for. It's, it can be your liability insurance, your property insurance for your buildings, and we attribute that to the school department. But for budgeted purposes, it's not under the education thirty-eight point six. It's kind of distributed over the rest of the pie.
Can I ask what the thirteen point one wedge is?
Public Works.
You have a lot more wedges than you have public-
Yeah, you know what I noticed because it didn't have debt? And so, I think it might have got cut off, so I apologize.
Yeah, the one point four.
Well, I was looking at the yellow, yeah.
I'm wondering about thirteen.
I think that might be the debt. The Public Works is the ten point two. I apologize for that. I kind of put it at the last minute because I wanted to show you all, and then I realized that it got cut off on the side. But the debt would be the thirteen point one. There was a presentation that was given maybe three years ago, and it was really geared more towards debt, and it was our financial advisors, First Southwest came in and they gave this presentation. I looked through it, I've heard people talk about it before. It was very informative. Again, didn't want this to be a debt presentation, but I wanted to grab a couple excerpts from that presentation from the financial advisors, just to support, you know, what we're doing. And funding, and this is what they said, this is from their presentation, "Funding the operating budget with non-reoccurring revenue is unsustainable. It necessitates eventual major service disruptions or substantial revenue increases or both, and it threatens market access and increases borrowing cost." And that is absolutely true. Um, I just wanted to point out, not to point out a community, but it was in the newspaper, and I remember when I was working in Chatham, it was highlighted because it was the neighboring town, and this is what happened with Harwich in the early two thousands. They were using free cash to support their budget, and what happened was their free cash just went down. And I'll talk about free cash a little bit, um, in a little, in a few minutes, but it was unsustainable. They didn't have the revenue to support their budget, and they needed major service cuts, and they went in for an override for public safety, and it failed, and they had major, major layoffs. And I just remember, you know, um, because, you know, I was in a neighboring community where we were using that example as we were setting our financial policies, but that's really what you want to avoid. You do not want to use free cash to fund your budget, and a lot of communities were doing it, and a lot of communities aren't doing it.
Excuse me, what does threatens market access mean?
When we go out to, um, major capital projects, um, it could be a school, it could be, you know, right now we have ninety million dollars out there. It could be, you know, right now, we have ninety million dollars out there. We could not be able, if we're in such bad financial, you know, a bad financial state, it threatens our market access in order to, you know, sell our bonds.
Our ability to borrow.
Yeah, our ability to borrow to support our projects. And the importance of funding reserves, this comes from the same presentation. Reasonable reserves should be maintained for unforeseen adverse events and not to fund reoccurring expenditures. We want to make sure we have a savings account. We all want to make sure we have a savings account for that day that something might happen, that we might need to dip into it. And it's the same thing for the town. That's why we've been funding our general stabilization fund.
Jennifer, is there a budget policy to go with that aspect? Didn't the Board of Selectmen set a policy a few years ago of where they wanted the stabilization funds to be?
Yep, and that's the next slide.
Are we there yet?
No. And let me talk about that a little bit. Last year, when I worked with Julian and Heather of putting some recommendations for the Board of Selectmen for their budget policy, traditionally, it was in their budget policy. They would vote this every year. But every year, according to, well, let me back up for a second. Good reserve policies usually are a percentage of your operating budget or your revenues. The Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA, recommends two months of unrestricted operating expenses. Now, GFOA is national. We do have some limitations with Proposition Two and a Half. So this is what a lot of our financial advisors would suggest. And usually, there would be a range in here. But this is what the Board of Selectmen has voted in the past with their budget policy. And your unreserved fund balance would be ten percent. The value would be, it would be ten percent of your budget. The value would be about ten point five million. Right now, we're at about six point three. Your general stabilization fund, five percent of your general fund revenues. We're at five point, they want to be around five point two. We're at about three point four right now with the last vote. So we're not there just yet. And so let me back up a little bit. When I came here, this was something that was part of the Board of Selectmen's budget policy. They had, they had their next year's budget policy, and then they had fundamental fiscal policies that were adopted in '06. I've actually been working on just some fundamental fiscal policies and revamping those a little bit. Because this really wouldn't change the percentage that the Board of Selectmen would really want to meet. This is a national standard, kind of changed a little bit from Massachusetts. So it's, it's really a Board of Selectmen statement that they want to make. Last one they made was '06. Should make a new one. I've been working on that. So I did take it out of the operating budget policy that they voted last October. But this is really where you want to be, and this is where we are at right now. We're, I mean, we're getting there. And I do want to mention that bond rating agencies, you know, you hate to say, we want to do what other towns do, but bond rating agencies really look at where other towns are at. For example, with your OPEB liability. Our OPEB liability is about eighty-eight million. How do you fund that? There isn't a requirement to fund it. We don't have to fund it. But what the issue is, is other communities are funding it. And so it helps their bond rating. And so if all the other communities are funding it, we have to fund it. They really look at, you know, neighboring communities, what we're doing and what we're capable of. So I just wanted to mention that.
Can you define unreserved fund balance?
Absolutely. And I'll elaborate a little bit on that. Unreserved fund balance is in your general fund. And it really is your free cash minus your receivables. And so when you close out the end of the year, which we're in the process of right now, you take your unreserved fund balance, you add your revenue, you subtract your expenditures, and you reserve your encumbrances of any town meeting warrant articles. And that's really how you come up with your unreserved fund balance. So if you have a high unreserved fund balance, you know, you're positioned well fiscally. If you don't, you will have a higher free cash. Doesn't mean you have to spend the free cash, but it shows.
That six million dollars that you're listing there, that is a current estimate of the unreserved fund balance?
No, it's as of June 30th, 2013, the last time I closed the books. Yeah, I haven't finished closing the books. Well, I should say, Vicky hasn't finished closing the book yet for FY14, so.
I just wondered, would it make any difference if, instead of it being a ten percent, to be a range? Because it seems like you've always talked, in the examples you've used, you talked about the fluctuation. Isn't that way, we'd feel a little bit better?
No, you're absolutely right. And, and that's what I want to do, is I want to use a range. I'd, my, I'd say five to fifteen, but I think five's too low. And so I do want to use a range. I didn't put a range up there because it's not anything that the Board of Selectmen has really, I've approached them with a range. I like the range, but it's some representation that I'd probably want to make to Julian and Heather and speak with them about it before it went to the board to adopt the range and have another discussion. Because it used to be at one point, maybe five to fifteen. I think it needs to be a little higher now. But I'd have another discussion, too, with our financial advisors. I mean, if you look at GFOA recommendations, and they look at two months of operating expenses, that could be like around, I think that could be like eighteen, about twenty million. But also, you could put in some other, you know, you can use some other reserves to come up with that. So it is, it is a little bit of a range.
Are there state regulations that set maximum limits on what those percentages are?
Yes, there are. I know with the stabilization fund, I don't know the percentage off the top of my head, but it can't be a certain percentage of your equalized value or your tax levy, the debt's the equalized value. So it can't be higher than a percentage of, of the levy.
This is our favorite topic, is our reserves. But these are like, for example, I go to the balance sheet at the end of the year, I'm going to find that line item called unreserved fund balances.
Yes.
In addition to that, do we also have other reserves other than the general stabilization fund and the unreserved fund balances spread out to the balance sheet? Do you have any idea how much those are?
We have the capital stabilization fund. It's, with the last vote, I think it might be around two point three million. Health insurance stabilization fund, we just reallocated that money, that unreserved, I mean, the general stabilization fund includes that. We have workers' comp trust reserve. You'd have to identify reserves. I can give you a copy of the balance sheet at some point, and you want to go through it. But you can, you can call, and let me just elaborate a little bit. Because one of the presentations I've done to Standard and Poor's, when we talk about reserve, we want to talk about all kinds of reserves. An example would be, you have a town meeting article funded a capital project with free cash. And I'm just using an example. This isn't Thelma, so I'm using that example. You want to fund in your capital program maybe four hundred thousand dollars every year for your roads. Okay? One year, you're spending three. DPW gets really busy, they only can spend two. So you're building up a little bit of a reserve. That can be a reserve. I've done that in the past. That's one of the issues that we talked about, I think, with sped, is when you put it as a town meeting article, you can use it as a reserve and roll it over from year to year. And that, and that helps, too, because then you have a year where, you know, you're doing a large road project, just an example, and you can, you know, use your last couple of years that you've built up. And Standard and Poor's likes that as well. We don't really do that too much here, but there's a lot of things that you can call reserves.
You're limited in which departments you can do carryover, so, aren't you? Can you do it every?
Depends on what, it depends on what it is.
If it's a town meeting article, you can carry it over as far as the yearly operating budget.
You can carry it over, but you have to spend it pretty quickly. It's a budget encumbrances. But yeah, that's why you would do, but you're right. That's why you would do an article versus putting something in your, into your budget. Because you have to close that out.
This may not be the right spot to talk about the OPEB's, but that, did you say idiot, no? Aren't people getting worried? Every time I hear that word, I'm worried.
I know. The way, I'm not worried about it. But I'll, I'll tell you why. Well, I live in Sandwich, and we still have a very high OPEB liability. And let me tell you why I'm not worried about it. Really, when they do an actuarial study, they're basically saying, if everybody left tomorrow, right, this is what you would owe. You'd owe eighty-eight million in health insurance. It's not going to happen. We're not private industry. The reason why this came about is that a lot of times, especially with pension, you know, a number of years ago, the companies weren't protecting people's pension plans. And so they would put it in investment vehicles, and then people would retire, and the money wouldn't be there because it was technically the company's. And so that's why you had a lot of legislative changes. And so with government, we're so highly regulated. And with OPEB, they just want, they want our financial statements to be more like private industry. But we're government. We're not private industry. And so there really is a balance. The same thing with GASB34 came into play when we had to put our fixed assets on our financial statements. A lot of private industry companies would do that, you know, because they might liquidate at some point, and they need to report to their shareholders and, you know, debt burdens, and they need to pay that off. Well, here, you know, we might look at building reuse. We might look at one point of selling of buildings, but we're not liquidating. You know, so we put it on our balance sheet. But what does it really mean to us? It just gives us a whole financial picture. But in a way, with government, we are pay-as-you-go because we're raising our revenues the next year through the tax, you know, through the tax base. And that's what's supporting our operations.
What happens if a town goes bankrupt?
Well, no, you're right. The town can go bankrupt. It's a great question.
So what happens to the liabilities at that point?
Well, when I think about nationally, some of the cities that might have declared bankruptcy, really what happens in Massachusetts is the state takes you over, and you go into what's called receivership. So you still have a level of, you know, bureaucracy there to kind of protect, you know, some of the assets. But if we stick to the financial policies we've been discussing, we don't really, you know, have to worry about that. Because when you think about where our revenue's coming, it's coming from our tax base. And when we look at, we have, you know, I'm so glad Patty's here tonight. Our collections must be, what, ninety-eight percent? You know? Because we're collecting taxes. You have to pay your taxes. You know, you don't have to pay, but a lot of people do. You know, I mean, the interest is crazy if they don't, you know? And then we have a vehicle to take property if that's not the case. We haven't done it. But when you think further out, and you think about why these, why it's in place, it kind of, you know, protects us in a way. So I'm not, you know, I mean, you know, I'm not worried about it today. But I don't want people to think that I don't think about these things or worry about these things. I do.
Jennifer, I was, I was in, I was having a meeting today, and we had a discussion on OPEB. And the question came up about the legislature possibly approving communities to use general obligation bonds to pay for their OPEB. And so then, and we would talk about, in other words, you would bond like eighty-eight million dollars, you know, and just pay it off, and then pay off your bond. But when you think about that over the course of five years, ten years, you don't know what's going to happen with health insurance, with anything else. And they're going to get stuck with having to pay off a general obligation bond when actually, the value would be worthless because policies could change over the course of time. I thought it was amazing that people would even think about that.
Yeah, and you look at the interest that you would pay, and are you making more interest on what you're investing? And right now, we're not, I mean, when we invest our money, we can't, we have to be conservative. Again, we're regulated, and we're not making a lot of money on our money. I mean, our interest rate is like, is ridiculously low, so. You know? But no, that's a great point. So the operating budget timeline, the Board of Selectmen, they adopted budget policy in October. And so this is the thought process that would go into budget policy presented to the Board of Selectmen. And the town manager budget recommendations are due January 1st to the Board of Selectmen. And, you know, again, you know, we all work very closely, Heather, Julian, and I, of putting, you know, the budget together, and Julian presenting it to the Board of Selectmen. And then the selectmen have about fourteen days to look at it and transmit it to the finance committee. And these timelines are in the, are in the charter. And then that's when the finance committee starts really doing their review. So the selectmen will transmit the budget to the finance committee. The finance committee is made up of subcommittees, and they have maybe two or three people on the subcommittee that will go and talk to the department heads about their budget, you know, and what they're requesting. And then they make the recommendations to town meeting for an April town meeting budget adoption. So when town meeting votes, they're voting on the finance committee's recommendation. And so where does the school department fit into all of this? The school department is really on their own timeline, which, to be honest with you, I'm not completely familiar with. We present the school department with the Board of Selectmen's budget policy increased for the next fiscal year. So it's kind of a, you know, this is what we're looking at, right? And this is, you know, these, you know, these are the numbers, if you will. And then the school department can assemble their budget according to their timeframe. And the school department, so for our purposes, when we put the budget together, we're looking at one number for the school department because they're going to bring one number in the, in here. It's just one number in the Yellow Pages that town meeting will vote on. Now, there is a subcommittee from the finance committee for the school department, and they attend a lot of their meetings. The fi, the school committee has a finance subcommittee that works closely with the finance committee's subcommittee. So there's a lot of behind-the-work scenes going on about their budget, what they're asking for, and what they're looking for. But they do have line item autonomy. We do have the one number that goes to town meeting. Okay, so that's really our operating budget. And that's how we look, you know, at this one article and where the revenues come from, what we look at for the future. I really felt that if I was giving a budget presentation, I had to talk about free cash. Because everybody wants to know where free cash comes from. Where, you know, all of a sudden, this revenue source that pops up in November, you know, and we're funding the capital, and where did this come from, you know? So I wanted to spend a few minutes on it. Free cash really are your budget turnbacks. That is what hasn't been spent at, you know, through the fiscal year, what town meeting appropriated, what we did not spend. That, we call it return to revenue, a budget turnback. It's your unspent appropriations.
How much is that?
Last year, I believe it was about one point seven. One point seven million. Now, one thing I want to mention, and I've mentioned this before, but this is a great forum to mention this. When we vote the budget, we vote all these pages, all these line items. We cannot go over these line items when we spend. So say you look at, I'll use the, my department, finance department. I have salaries and I have expenses. I can't overspend my expenses and then have my salaries pick that up. I have to stick to that line item. So what happens is it does, it's, doesn't give you a lot of flexibility, you know, towards the end of the fiscal year when you're looking at snow and ice. That's why you'll see these town meeting warrant articles in the April special of, you know, funding snow and ice from, you know, I did it this year, and I know people are probably asking questions of like, why are we funding snow and ice with health insurance? Like, it makes absolutely no sense. But what I'm trying to get to is the budget needs to support itself. You don't want to infuse, infuse it with free cash, which we've been doing a little bit every year, and I'm trying to reduce that when we get to April because I can't just transfer the money around. So when I go into the April town meeting, I still have three months of the fiscal year left, and I'm anticipating where I might run into problems, but I really don't know. So I have the town meeting vote. I also have the reserve fund from the finance committee. I can go to the finance committee, but that's three hundred thousand. You know, so I really don't have a lot of places to go. I can go to the Board of Selectmen and then go to the finance committee to transfer money around, but that's only up to three percent. So because of some of the restrictions on the line items, you know, I'm trying to anticipate, but really, you want the budget to fund itself. But that's why you'll have a higher turnback because, you know, you're sticking to each individual line item. You can't move money around. So you're actually, and free cash, your actual revenue over your estimated, your local receipts. So if you're estimating three point four, and you bring in three point five, a hundred thousand will go towards free cash. A good example is water. Water's in the general fund. We estimate six point five million. We brought in seven million. That five hundred thousand, we put into a water stabilization fund.
Jennifer, that's a bunch of turnbacks. It also means that our department heads, if they have a thousand dollar line item expenses. It also means that our department heads, if they have a $1,000 line item expenses, they're not rushing to necessarily max out spending that thousand just because it's there. They're, you know, often not spending up to the limit because they don't need it.
Absolutely. And I'm glad you brought that up because that is something that we do manage. We do manage the bottom line. And so when we do look at, you know, as we approach the end of the fiscal year, and if I see some money left over in a budget, we do talk to the department heads just to make sure what are their plans for it and not, you know, the last thing we want is the last warrant of the fiscal year is to have it this big because everybody wants to spend their money, but they're not. The very, the department heads are great here when it comes to that, managing their budget. They're very conscientious. You know, they want to make sure they're doing it, you know, just right. So I'm glad you brought that up, but you're right. Absolutely right. Free cash is looked at as a non-reoccurring revenue source because it is your budget turnbacks. I mean, when you vote at Town Meeting, the appropriations, they have every right to spend that money on what was voted at Town Meeting. If they don't spend it, that's great, but they, they can spend it. That's why you don't want to depend on it for a reoccurring expenditure. And then again, we went over local receipts where you can get into trouble if you maximize that. And that's why it's looked at as a one-time revenue source, free cash. So we want to use it for a one-time expenditure. So a really good policy to have is use your free cash to fund capital. Because when you think about if your free cash goes down, you can kind of cut back on your capital where if your free cash goes down or is eliminated, you don't want to have layoffs. And that's really kind of, you know, the way to look at it. And then if you have some extra free cash, you can put it into your reserves, that always helps. And you don't need to spend all of your free cash either because it's part of your undesignated fund balance. So it's kind of managing, what are the needs, prioritizing the needs. When we look at the capital plan, we'll look at that. That's why we have a 10-year capital plan. We want to know what's, you know, coming, you know, what's coming about, you know, so we, we can fund it, you know? If we have a large expenditure, you can have the capital stabilization fund or nothing prevents you from funding half this year and half next year, you know, saving up for it. It's always better to spend cash than it is to, to borrow.
And also on the 10%, 5% level, we talked earlier about the undesigned fund balance and the capital. If the undesigned fund balance got, you know, up to 15% and the capital is still at 2, we could make a transfer at that point, putting it into different places. Is that correct?
Yeah, if you, fund, undesigned fund balance got a little bit high, we'd probably want to look at, you know, the budget. But we could, again, we could do it, you know, once the free cash gets certified, you can put it anywhere. So best budget practices, again, you know, we want to be conservative because we want to hedge against the economic downturn and uncontrollable fixed cost increases. We've all seen them. It's been, you know, the last couple of years, it's been, hasn't been too bad with uncontrollable fixed cost increases. This helps our strong bond rating, keeps our interest low, especially with the 90 million out there, even though we are going for 0% in MWPAT. You know, we are doing some short-term borrowing and we do have some projects out there that we won't be using the trust. So it's always good to have a strong bond rating and a strong financial position. And then, as, as you know, with anything that can come up, you know, you're able to, to deal with it, you know, and you're not panicking. One of the issues too is a comprehensive annual financial report. It's in the five-year, Board of Selectmen's five-year strategic plan. And what is that? Well, every year, we put together an annual report, but a CAFRA is what it's called. It's comprehensive. It goes 10 years out, has a lot of statistics, has 10-year revenue forecast. So we're looking at putting one of those together. Bond rating agencies like that because they like the planning. And actually, there'll be a request in the capital plan to ask for assistance to put, put this together because it is pretty extensive. And also what supports a strong bond rating, a good, is good, strong management. You have a good, strong charter. That, that definitely helps. Fiscal policies, which we vote every year and, you know, you have the fundamental fiscal policies and your debt management. We have a great, again, debt management policy of using our debt drop-off not to increase the levy. If anybody has any debt questions, we could probably answer them right now. We're good? Okay. But again, I don't mind coming back and giving a debt presentation. I love to talk about debt. So does anybody have any questions?
A little background for me on the capital project. How does one get a project onto the capital plan?
We sent out a, traditionally, I haven't really, you know, we would see articles come in.
Is it an annual?
Yeah, every year, we send out a memo to everybody and actually, we send one out. We make sure the school department gets it. We ask for, you know, your funding for your capital for your next 10 years so we can incorporate it into the plan. And that's really what we do. The last couple of years, the school department, I know last year, they asked for a couple vans. And then the other thing that had been floating around was the design for the Lawrence School windows. But that, we don't really have anything in the capital plan 10 years out, if that's what your question is. But we do ask, we send out the memo to everybody and ask for it to be submitted.
So I'm curious, the athletic field that's been bouncing around, as to why that has never managed to get onto, formally get onto the capital plan?
School department, school committee never submitted it.
But it wasn't a school project, so.
I'm gonna leave that discussion.
Yeah, no, it's okay. I'm, I'm just curious. And then I read in the paper about the development of the carousel and the Shiverquan boardwalk. Would that be considered a capital plan?
I need to, I'm not familiar with it. I need to know more information about that.
Judy, so far, the capital items, I think where she's trying to go is the, the things that end up on the capital plan now come from the department heads now.
Yeah.
The athletic fields was a private petitioner. There is not a way until a department picks it up that the department head can be put in onto a capital plan on the long range. The same with the carousel. If that comes through a department, it could end up on the capital plan, but it has to come from the department head.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks for answering that. I, we've talked a lot about the athletic field, so I wasn't sure.
Yes. I guess I have actually a question for you.
For me?
As a chair.
Yeah, I am.
In terms of the overall budget process, what is the point in time where an average citizen would be able to provide their input as to what they think the priorities are for, you know, the FY '16 budget process? Because I know what the timeline is. And the timeline has the Town Manager giving it to the Board of Selectmen on January 1st and then going to the Finance Committee on the 15th of, of January. And it, it all starts moving very quickly, but the actual numbers are being pulled together in like October, November, December. And when I talk with, you know, people around town, everybody has a long list of things that they would like to have added, you know, whether it be the schools, sidewalks, roads, library, police. I mean, ask anybody, you're going to get a different list of things. Trees was the one I heard just today. You know, when would they be able to put that, put in that feedback and get it in at sort of the beginning of the process instead of when it goes down to the Finance Committee, it starts to become very difficult to make those changes?
That's a very good question. Actually, I'm thinking, as you were speaking, that the Board of Selectmen does hold the, it's not a public hearing, but we do have a discussion on budget policy. And that's about a four-page document. That might be an opportunity, I think, for anybody who was there and wanted to come and talk about it. By the time we do the budget, I mean, we only have 15 days from the time we receive the budget to when it has to go to, to the Finance Committee. So we don't really have a lot of time at that point. So I think we would have to come up with some other way to, to have the public come in and engage in that process. And maybe it would be sometime during a budget policy meeting or following a budget policy meeting before the budget actually gets put together.
I actually think it would have to go to the department heads that they want to have spending the money.
That's true.
It wouldn't come to us. It would have to be in October, November, December. And they unfortunately would have to be knowledgeable enough to say, if it's a tree, that means you're going to go to this department. If it's a road, if it's an athletic field on the school department, the request actually wouldn't come to us. I think that would be too micromanaging at that point for us to be getting into it. It would have to be the department that had, that would be requesting the funding.
I do also know on the town website, there is a little bit of information under, I believe the Town Manager's capital expenditures where it sort of shows the documentation that went out to the department heads and it gives you an idea about what the ideas are for spending in the future. It's really, I, I think when the, the goal of redoing the town website comes about, that might be one of the areas to make a little bit clearer. It's, it's, you know, their handwriting or it's a little bit difficult to see sometimes. But am I correct that there is some information?
Yes, in, in general, there is. If I could just interject, I think anytime it comes to somebody's mind is the time to put that request in. Can be throughout the year. There is no one golden time in my judgment as Town Manager. And in fact, I get suggestions and requests frequently throughout the year. The dilemma, honestly, that I try and share with folks that have those suggestions is there are, there's no limit to the number of suggestions, but there's a severe limit to the revenue to afford them. And, and the priority setting that's necessary to balance the budget, that's where the difficulty arises. As Jennifer noted, about 80% of our spending is on personnel and matters related to personnel. There's very, very little that is discretionary when you can consider the entire budget package and that can be allocated to things that are not within the budget. Unless you are willing to cut programs or reduce services, then that frees up dollars for other things, but it makes for some very potentially devastating consequences. So I do encourage people to talk to me to make those proposals at any time during the year when they arise rather than wait for a certain time. But certainly, as you've noted, Nick and, and Pat, we are getting into a very busy period now and we are receiving operating budget requests, are beginning to be packaged along with capital requests. So now is an excellent time, if anybody has been holding on to some suggestions, to come forward with those and transmit them. We're happy to consider them at the Town Manager's office and distribute it, distribute those requests or suggestions to the appropriate departments. But again, I just want to share that caution that we welcome creative ideas, suggestions, suggested priorities, but we have to look at any areas of new spending with where do we reduce spending to offset that because as Jennifer's noted, even in a good year, we're looking at maybe $2.6 million in new revenue conservatively to allocate. And 80% of that is generally going to personnel right off the top unless we're going to be cut, cutting back in, in personnel, programs or services. So the discretionary choices are relatively slim and they have to be well thought out. So please come forward with suggestions.
On the process to go through, just so everybody would be clear, and correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not going to pick a department with a project because I think that will get too close. But say I really felt the need of a sidewalk on a street and I started with the DPW in January and I convinced the head of the DPW that this was a worthwhile project. He would put it on his budget. And that budget is the budget that would be submitted to Julian for him to okay and fit into the process or to slash because the department heads submit their budgets every year with their requests. And they don't come back the same as they are submitted is what we are led to believe lots of times because the cuts have to be made. Am I wrong?
Well, I think in, in general, that's, that's a fair statement, although I would say that the budgets, some department heads, depending on the department, turn the budget into a wish list, which is not practical or productive, which is, you know, some operate that way, which makes for more work for the Town Manager, Finance Director and, and others because we have to live within our means. And to bring to the selectman a budget that is out of balance, even though I wouldn't do that, but to bring one of the, to the selectmen and ultimately the Finance Committee that's impractical, inappropriate, overstates revenues or doesn't suggest that you have to make difficult choices is irresponsible. So if I get a request that's overblown, my job as Town Manager is to put in the proper context and try and do that kind of balancing act between all the departments within the town. And it's, it's a challenging process when there are a lot of demands. And particularly when, if we happen to be going through a year where collective bargaining settlements are maybe a little higher than average, a little higher than normal, or revenues are a little challenging, limitations on free cash, et cetera. So yes, I would say that those departments that come in with inappropriately high expectations on spending, which would require pirating or cutbacks in other departments, I do, I do my job on those because I think you have to achieve that balance. And if you have a balanced community, generally, people's expectations are met and you don't have any extremes. But I think that those department heads that think through things well and participate in the 10-year capital process in a disciplined way that Jennifer talked about, as well as look at spending in reasonable terms, I think things are much easier if the department head does his or her job in advance and makes those kind of tough decisions or calls me or Heather if there are questions about what we think is reasonable or not reasonable. So, but having said that, I think it would not be difficult to find any department head saying that they would like to have more money and spend on more things like sidewalks. But staying with that example, if I may, there is an allocation for sidewalks and public works every year. And the challenge is where to set priorities for spending that limited money. Because if we move more into sidewalks, we have less for roads or less for other things. We move a little bit into enhanced bike path maintenance with, with, in this particular calendar year with the selectmen's approval and Finance Committees, we shifted a little more resources, as we're aware here, into bikeway maintenance. And we've had a lot of positive comments about that. And the reason is because we've allocated more resources, but frankly, we've tinkered a little bit with the percentages we allocate elsewhere. So it's a balancing act throughout and you try and make responsible decisions. Sometimes you're a little too far in one direction, not far enough in another, and it's, that's the beauty of our process, working with a selectman who'll give me budget advice all year long and rightly so, it was very helpful. And the Finance Committee in your role as well. And as, as you're aware, Jennifer's a regular attendee, of course, as she should be. I try and attend as much as I can because your guidance and insight is very helpful to me, as is that that I receive from others. But there's no magic to it. It's just rolling up the sleeves and being a good listener and recognizing that we can't have all things at once. So sorry to answer your question with such a soapbox explanation.
No, that's fine.
I know you understand.
Well, there is a process if someone had something they really felt needed to be done. There is a process.
And one more, just a comment on that. There are a lot of public and private partnerships to which, Judy, your example of the carousel, it was my understanding with Jim Bowen's presentation on behalf of that committee that, that it was informative to the selectmen and suggested a public-private partnership with funding and with coordination. So a lot, a lot of these ideas, the West Hamlet Playground, came up in coordinating with town resources, but not necessarily using so much of the town resources. So that's another way, you know, if, if folks in the public have ideas and that, I know I, I get a lot of emails that I direct directly to the Town Manager who, you know, as, as he suggested, disperses them to the correct departments. But that, that's another way for the town to stretch its resources would be through the multiple nonprofits that are in the area and with good ideas from individuals. So that's another example of how things get done.
I don't know who to ask to be called on.
I'm sorry, what?
Are you directing?
Yes, I'm waiting for people to raise their hands if they want to speak.
I just wanted to, on behalf of the school committee, mention how we, during the course of our budget development, have open time for public. We, when the budgets are being prepared at the school level, the school councils entertain information and from their constituency. So the principal of the school council will be inputting into each school's budget. And then we have in October, November, meetings with the parents and with parents and the public. And then we have a formal hearing on the budget in, usually in January. And we, we have this budget development chart that we pass every year. We'll be passing that pretty darn soon for the schools. So there are many places to insert the public.
Excuse me, Judy, is that publicized or available?
Yep.
Online. Online?
I don't know about online, but.
Where is that available?
Well, we have to redevelop the timeline. We have a new person coming on board, but that comes out every year, so it would be a document you could get for sure.
And we do publicize it and it would become part of our agenda as well.
Right.
I heard you say that we build the budget based on the last fiscal year. But my question is, it doesn't take into account the impact of the cuts year after year after year and there's every department, so that's why there's not enough money to go around. There never will be, but there could be a little bit more. My question is, can we amend the tax base? We are very lucky in Falmouth to have the services that we do for the taxes that we pay. If we gave a little more breathing room to all of the departments, we wouldn't have this feeling of, you know, you're robbing one place to put it over here and all of that. Is there a way to build that up slowly to take into account all the things that have been cut over the years because of the fiscal constraints? And do it in a way that's very, very slow and methodical? I know people don't think raising taxes is a popular thing, but I have to pay for what my bills are, you know, and if they cost, certainly oil has gone up in price and I have to pay that. And I can't say, well, it doesn't fit my budget. You're right, I have to, and I will pay what my tax levy is, but I don't see why we're continuing to live in such a poverty-stricken town environment when we don't have to.
I'll take a shot at that.
Okay.
Two and a half percent is what we can raise taxes on the budget. The only other way we can raise taxes is with an override.
Yeah, thank you.
Jennifer, if you know that, I think that's it. The only way you can raise them is with an override.
So can the town go for an override in a sense, all the departments get together and say, you know, we need some breathing room, we don't have enough, we've gone, the library's hours have been dropped? I'm sure DPW would come in and say, well, we don't have this, this, and this. You know, maybe it's something to look at as a town rather than one department trying to garner an override or two departments. It's a town-wide issue and we're all affected.
Well, I have heard some people in the community say that our taxes are too low, that we should increase our taxes. And the only way to do that is with an override. The question is, it would have to be very well done and it would have to be inclusive, it would have to be specific so that people knew what the monies were going, how they were going to be spent, and you'd have to get community support on a ballot. And that is not easy. I'm not saying it can't be done, it can be done.
I just, well, and even before you made your point, Donna, I was thinking about raising revenues, other ways. I mean, as much as I enjoyed the presentation at last town meeting by the selectmen, there were two things mentioned, parking meters and moorings. And that's, I don't know how we move forward with those two things. So part of me is almost thinking, we've got, the one thing Falmouth has as a resource is great people who are really committed to the town and really care. I think every department is doing a great job. I think the people that we have in charge are doing a great job. I've gotten up at town meeting before and I've said, I don't feel like there's wanton spending and waste that's going on. I think our, one of our problems is, is that how do we generate, you know, as a town, we've decided that preserving land is important to us. So land has been taken off the tax shelves because that was a priority that we set, which is important. But, you know, you lose that money, that goes away, it doesn't come back. So what have we replaced? How can we, you know, what is, and I don't know what that thing is. Is there, I know there's the Economic Develop, EDIC, I know they're working on things. I would almost want to see a commitment town-wide with different, like a BYDIS, have everybody bring their own piece to the table of what we see Falmouth being, the future of Falmouth, and what our priorities are. And then once we come up with those, then figure out how to fund them. And sure, I'll volunteer, whatever you need me to do, I'll do. But I just, I just feel like right now, the problem is raising the money. I don't think we've, you know, do we charge enough for the marina, you know, for the boat slips? Mr., you know, every year I look at the beaches and it's almost like we have tourism industry despite of our best efforts to keep tourists out of Falmouth type of thing. You know, you can come to the bathroom, but I don't, come to the beach, but I don't know where you're going to park and I don't know where you're going to go to the bathroom. So it's, I just think if we could do like a, throughout the town, a priority setting and commit to that because everything that we've said, even when Jennifer's talking about the numbers, I'm thinking, this is the same thing we do on the school side, absolutely. You know, we know what the numbers are, we know what we need. Sometimes things come up and you have to deal with them, you can't just leave things off to the side. So I think we're all in the same, but how do we, why do we do that?
You know, Laura, 20 years ago, Harry Turkington convened a meeting called the Sense of Place, and maybe some of you were here when that happened. It was the Falmouth Academy. He invited anybody in the town to come and that's what we talked about. What does Falmouth mean to you? Where is it now and where do you think it should be and how are you going to get there? And then 10 years later, there was a regrouping and the same, the same idea, it was the Sense of Place and people were invited, I can't remember where the one was 10 years ago.
Was it St. Barnabas, in that little building?
Oh, in the parish house. And that's what we did. And I told him about three months ago, it's time to have another Sense of Place where the community can come together and just express the thoughts that you have expressed. And that if we need to do this, that what do we need to do? These are the goals, this is where we want to be, and how are we going to get there and what is it going to cost? He said he would do that come September, late September, and have another meeting on Sense of Place. And if any of you were there in the last 20 years at either one of them, it was a really fabulous community dialogue for people. So I would commit to, again, reach out to him and say, let's do it again, I think it's time. Because that, it's, 10 years is a long time, but a lot of things have happened in the last 10 years. And it gives people who want to have a voice the opportunity to come and say it in a place where it'll have some meaning. And then the end, and the outcomes would be, well, let's decide what it is we want to do and how are we going to get there.
And I would just say to add to that, that we already, this, part of this presentation has already been about the mechanisms for setting those priorities. And that's what the town has shifted to, is looking 10 years out and we are setting our priorities. So wherever the input comes from, the priorities are set. And so maybe there's a better mechanism to get that information to all the different groups and individuals that help set that priority. I mean, ultimately, the town, through their voting and through their voice, sets that priority, but people just have to be, whether it's individually or something collective like this, more engaged. But we have, we have a policy that is forward-looking in that way, and that's part of what Jennifer is talking about, is really making sure that we're looking a decade out and discussing what the priorities are for the town and how we pay for it ultimately.
Well, we're going to get to the, surely, but we need to have the boards contribute first. Anybody else?
Can I just interject a couple items? One, I just wanted to note that, of course, we had a selectman capital advisory committee, of course, that we met and made a report and Selectman Jones was an important part of that, who's with us here tonight. And one of the things that is clear is that while there are other potential sources of revenue, it's important to keep in mind that each one of those sources of revenue has a potential constituency whose ox is being gored and who normally is quite willing to step forward and remind us that raising new revenues is a challenge. And we also have to remain generally in balance with other municipalities that provide similar services and administratively, we attempt to do that. It's, you're never quite perfect, but we work on that every year with the board when, as you know, you set fees and permits and explore those other items. The other thing that I wanted to mention, touching on what Donna and Laura talked about too, and another aspect of it in my view, is the state. Many, some years ago, when the national recession began, the state, as we're all aware, began to cut back municipal revenue sharing considerably. And of course, we've never recovered. Even though the state has recovered, revenue sharing with municipalities never has. And the other aspect of that that's so difficult is unfunded mandates continue to mount. And I know on the school side, mandates for special education, which are very important, and school transportation, which are very important, have never been fully funded by the state. Nonetheless, they continue to put more and more requirements on without, in my judgment, the state doing the job that they're responsible to do, and that is to work with local government to help support those additional mandates. On the town level, we have a federal mandate that's coming through the state for stormwater control and stormwater management. It is a huge unfunded mandate that most municipalities have not even begun to approach, but that is a very large number. And down the road, we'll be hearing more about it. We're just dealing with water and wastewater currently, which are federal and state mandates that affect our environmental quality. We recognize they're important. That's why we had, I think, the kind of vote that we had back in May when so much work was put into water and wastewater improvements. But I just wanted to mention that that state piece of it is, continues to be missing from the table. Not the mandates that they give us, not the failure to fund those mandates, not the increase in the requirements and the paperwork for all the mandates, but being a partner in funding. And I am hoping that we can all influence the elected officials at the state level who have much more money than they had a few years ago, but are sharing, they're not sharing the same percentage of it that they used to. Granted, we're happy to be at eight percent. I'm not asking, suggesting that it's healthy necessarily to be much higher than that. But where we have a mandate or where the state has failed to fund it, I think they need to step up and we need to keep the pressure on them to remind them that that is important. And I know some of us, myself included, sound like a broken record, but I know when our colleagues on the school side struggle with school transportation and sped, and those are very important things and right things to do, the state ought to be more of a partner in that. And the extent to which they are not causes considerable budget pressures, those dollars could be allocated much more productively. So just wanted to say that, thank you.
I just may mention, the school committee as well has been consistently having Mr. Madden and Mr. Vieri in to discuss those same issues. We seem to be getting nowhere. And perhaps as a town committee, the effort should be more forceful, coming to, you know, sending this information from the town of Falmouth to our representatives rather than the different departments. And I understand what Mr. Suso's saying in regards to the constituency, in regards to it's always going to hit someone. But because of the cuts we've had in the school department in the past several years, I mean, we are down to bare bones. So if it comes down to, if we have to institute even all the kindergarten fees or whatever, we're hitting a constituency as well and a group of our population in town that cannot afford to decide in regards to paying fees for what I believe is public education.
Anybody else?
In the balance of that is, of course, at the other end of the spectrum, folks with limited budgets who also need services and also have the great demand that Mr. Suso mentioned in terms of expensive water and that is a mandate. So, you know, I, and also that, you know, in terms of the process, there is a process for these projects going forward that maybe we need to use more and get more people involved with Sense of Place included, but that, you know, it's, it is a matter of balance and I think Laura's idea is probably very creative in terms of finding more revenue sources, whether it is with the state or otherwise. There is always a balance in, you know, what the community needs and which constituency, everyone needs something.
Thank you. I've been on two committees, three actually, but the most recent one was how to raise money. And Mr. Scher and Doug were on it and Jennifer, and we came up with 10 ideas. And the idea of raising money always costs somebody something. They want to raise taxes. We talked about parking meters and there's 10 or 12 other things that are on the list. So my question is, will those be in consideration, I hope, for our budget plans for this year? And I am directing that.
I would just say they would be in consideration to the, to the extent that people in this room are willing to consider those raises, and that is the difficulty is that, as you've noted, and that committee did terrific work, but I know that for every one of those suggested, there is a group that is concerned that it will create an unhealthy balance in terms of additional fees or additional taxes for them. So it is a balancing act and where do we go? And one of the things we try to do is determine, is this reasonable based upon what other municipalities are doing? And that's sometimes a tough, a tough question to answer. One of the things that is often forgotten here, while we talk about services in Falmouth, is that we provide, when I say we, I don't mean me, I mean, the elected officials here and the appointed officials here and others that have come before have determined that the level of services, basic services provided here is greater than anywhere else in the Cape. Nowhere else on Cape Cod do you get our house calls made to pick up residential refuse. That's very expensive. And I'm not advocating that that not continue, but I just want to affirm that for the tax dollars which are invested in this community, you receive a higher level of service than you do anywhere else on the Cape. And I think that's something that everyone in this room should be very proud of. It's because wise choices were made, allocation of resources occurred, and it's not just about refuse pickup. There are some other areas as well, as most of us are aware. And I think that frequently gets left out of the equation, recognizing that comparatively we do, we go a lot further than some others do. But again, at the end of the day, it's a balancing act. What revenues do we want to talk about in every year? As I noted, the selectmen look at fees and look at other assessments that they feel can reasonably be considered, even things like ambulance fees. And our ambulance, our level of ambulance fees here frankly is lower than most other municipalities in the Commonwealth because the selectmen recognize and have indicated a concern for the average person who incurs those fees, even though by and large, many of them are paid by insurance. So there's that constant balance and constant dialogue that everybody doesn't always pick up on, but there is a sensitivity that has to be taken into account. And I'm sure we'll have that same dialogue this year as we have in the past.
I want to hear from Mr. Fenner, you had a question or a comment earlier?
Comments, questions? First off, you were right on money, Doug. My question was about the two and a half percent override. I mean, that's a state maximum. Nowhere is it mandated that we have to raise our taxes by that much, and it's a relatively new policy. If you recall, a couple of years ago, when the selectmen were discussing it, they wanted to raise it 2.25 percent. And one of the selectmen said, well, we can't leave money on the table. And I don't know, with this group, I'm, don't take this as an insult, but you're sort of insular. People out in the town that are paying these taxes, they heard that, they heard that loud and clear and they didn't like it. I mean, when you raise someone's taxes two and a half percent a year, that's 25 percent in 10 years. Since 2008, the average, the median income in this country has dropped by seven percent. So these things are heading in the opposite direction. I mean, money's finite and people have to realize you're spending other people's money. And the question on, that Laura made about T-Ticket Park, it was a good question, but I don't think your answer was complete. You said that it was shifted elsewhere. I mean, we pay three percent of our tax dollar right off the top. Everybody sees it on their tax bill for the CPA. That three percent bought that park for $3 million. But beyond that, we don't, and I'm just using round numbers here, we don't get the $10,000 a year in taxes anymore. And you said it was shifted, but it's shifted to you, it's shifted to me, it's shifted to everyone else in this room. So we're paying three percent of our taxes to have our taxes also raised by some unknown percentage. I mean, it's just unsustainable. People can't afford this. And I know you didn't want questions about budgets, so I think you're going to have to have a budget session. But I got a question that you're not going to be able to answer. And we have 10.9 million in expired debt this year. We were sold the sewer system, told it wasn't going to raise our debt. If you do the round numbers on that, it's $50 million over the next five years. If you do the round numbers on that, it's $50 million over the next five years. 70% of that's being paid by the public, and that was raised by the Board of Selectmen. Their policy was 45%. So that leaves $50 million in the next five years. These are just round numbers. So that's $3 million a year. That seems to me, that seems to leave a windfall of $7.9 million a year. Where's that money going?
Well, let me, let me answer the question. I don't understand.
I know this is rough, but I mean, you can give me some kind of a thumbnail here.
I absolutely will.
There seems to be a big chunk of money that we're not talking about.
Our debt policy, okay? Our debt drops off. Our levy is right here, and it includes our excluded debt. So we're raising our excluded debt over our levy. When I saw, when I gave the presentation, your levy's 80 million, 90 million we're raising, including the excluded debt. Your excluded debt drops off over time. And so what that creates is a window of opportunity. And I actually have a plan where I answered this question at town meeting, and I have graphs to show you where the debt level is, how it drops off, and how we're including new debt, and the plan on when we would bond the debt. So I have my numbers back at my office. So what happens is, is when you authorize a project for $90 million, doesn't mean I'm borrowing 90 million today, and doesn't mean I'm going to start paying it off tomorrow. I borrow it as I need it when the, when the project is constructed. And so with the timeframe of like every two years, as your debt drops off, we incorporate new debt into that to steady the levy. And so the levy would be steady all the time, so you're not spiking the tax levy, and you're not dramatically dropping the tax levy and spiking it. That's really what the debt policy is. And so when I took the 90 million, including design and the 9 million that we just voted last year, a year ago, I incorporated that. And so when the debt drops off, what we've been paying is some principal in that to keep the levy up, and that's what it is. But you're not going to, you know, get authorized for 90 million and then, and then pay it off. You're going to pay it off, and you're going to bond it once the project's complete, and that takes time. And the more time it is, the more your levy drops off, and the more time you have is to incorporate within that window of opportunity.
Can I just say that you did absolutely nothing to answer my question? I asked about the $10.9 million in expired debt, and the $7.9 million that seems to be left.
Well, I don't have $10 million in expired debt, so I don't know what that number's coming from.
That's what you told us.
I would suggest that maybe you two work this out somewhere else, because other people want to speak to it.
It's supposed to be public information. Did they not tell us we had $10.9 million in expired debt?
Could I say that this is explained very well at the April town meeting by a very nice presentation, and perhaps you go back and look at that again?
Why can't the question be explained now? I'm just.
I do not understand the way that you're asking the question.
You don't?
Mary, I think this.
But I do know that it was explained very well in April.
So you have the floor.
I think there's a confusion in his numbers, that the $90 million, if I'm correct, Jennifer, 50 million or 40 million of it is the water filter, which is not being reimbursed at 70% by anybody.
I didn't see that.
And of the 50 million, that's the sewer, only 28 million of it is being 70/30 split?
35 million. Seven times five is 35.
No, because it's not, it's not on the whole 50 million, because part of the project is not the sewer. Part of the project was the widening of the inlets and the oysters and everything else.
Judy?
Madam Chairman, I think we're going astray. We set, you set this up, and we requested it, that it be a workshop on overall budgeting. And now we're getting into specifics.
I agree. Really, Mark, I'm going to suggest that you sit down with Jennifer and have her answer your questions, but this is not the floor. Dan, did you have a question or a comment?
It's been mostly answered, because I was still going to go by on the Capitol. And there were 122, I believe, I don't have my notes here, ways of saving or raising money. One of them was to sell some of the town properties that aren't being used, and we do have quite a few, which I haven't heard anybody say anything about. One was to sell off the school administration building, which is underused and very expensive to run, one of the most expensive buildings we have, and there is space to move the people that are in it to other locations in the town. So I think we can do a lot of work. Jennifer worked very hard on, with that committee, came in on a lot of Wednesday nights on her own time, and is very knowledgeable. But I don't think our, we have, or have studied that report or really looked at it or worked at it at all. And raising taxes is something that a lot of people in this town, who are retirees, can't afford. There may not be any of us in this room that feel, that fall into that category. And anybody who wants to pay more taxes can. You have to pay what you get taxed, but you can make a contribution. You can double your taxes. You think your taxes are too low? Send a bigger check. But don't blame, don't hurt the people who can't afford it, who are going to the food pantry. And everybody here should go into that food pantry and see how many people in this town are living there and eating.
Okay, Dan, thank you. Thank you very much.
Raising taxes, I think, is very wrong. There is no end to this time.
Thank you, Dan. We have time for one more question or one more comment.
I believe Jane Perry had a question behind you.
Okay, Jane.
Thank you. I will be brief. First of all, this dialogue and this information says, and was very informative, very helpful. I hope my fellow town meeting members get to watch this. And the things that you suggested, The Sense of Place, and about the other things about Mr. Suso brought up, I have two questions. On, in the budget, in the operating budget, there are many line items that committees and commissions have that are not department heads. So is there a time, because I'm all new to this, being a fairly new chairperson, only four years, and George Bybee has gone, so does the FinCon contact these people to come in and discuss their issues? And is there a timeframe, or how do you, how do you do that? That's my first question.
Judy?
I'll answer that now. You will be contacted by the subcommittee, the chairman of a commission, if there's no department head.
Okay. And when would that be? Is that after the, the selectmen make their?
That will, yes. Yeah, that will be after January 15.
Okay. My other, my other question is regarding the school committee. And I'm glad they said they're going to have public hearings, public forum, because when we had a, a problem with the school committee in April, we had budget crunches, and it was a panic, and they had all kinds of meetings. They were televised. They were great. I hope we have them again. My question is about special education, and I hate that word, dislike that very, very. It should be changed. My take an after conter, but people know me, maybe that could be done. It should be DEEP, D-E-E-P, Disability Education Enhancement Program. So town meeting member, members voted for stabilization process or stabilization fund for special education programs in the schools. Is that line item, or is that program, or stabilization fund, going to be level-funded this year? Is it going to be decreased? Is it going to be increased? Because like Ms. Augusta and Ms. Fenwick and Dr. Gifford says, transportation and the things that these children need to succeed, I know even the things that I use, are much more expensive than the regular person. So that needs to be considered. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much, Jane. All right. I want to thank Jennifer for a great presentation. And I want to thank all of you for being here. I think this was a really good discussion tonight, and I think we should probably have it more often.
Just a point of business. I was checking today to see what the warrant schedule was, and if I read correctly, September 12th, the warrant closes. Is that a correct date?
I don't have it.
September 12?
Yes.
So, and any placeholders or articles that we want to get in have to be in by September 12?
That's correct. September 12. Okay. As I mentioned earlier, I attended a very interesting meeting all day today, and I'm just going to leave you with three things that I heard at this meeting. First of all, that in 2008, many of you know that municipalities all around the country, because of the downturn in the economy, really, when people, when employees retired, they were not replaced. So now, it's come about that there are really fewer municipal employees nationwide. And now in the healthcare system, there are more retirees in the healthcare system now than there are employees. That's a national number. The second thing is, and you probably already knew, that Massachusetts has the highest healthcare costs of any state in the nation. And thirdly, there, the new mortality figures are out. And in 15 years, the mortality figure for females is 90.1 years, and for males, it's 88.3. So ladies, they're catching up with us. And with that, a motion to adjourn. Second. All of us in favor say aye.
Do you think we need a motion to adjourn as well?
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Finance Committee, motion to adjourn. All in favor? Just in favor.
[inaudible].